Okay, I want to welcome everyone and thank for the wonderful coming to the meeting. And the first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, 5.1 is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines that are printed at the end of the agendas that can be found on the table over there. So I just want to mention a couple of things. During community comments, the board administration listens to comments. Responses will be shared at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Board members or their superintendent may ask questions of you in order to gain a thorough understanding of your concern, suggestion, or request. Please be aware that disrespectful comments or comments of a personal nature directed at an individual, either by name or inference, will not be allowed. Personal concerns should be directed first to the principal, then to the superintendent, then in writing to the board. And also please refrain from making comments at other times during the meeting. All right, and we've got a couple of people for community comments. Maren Webb, Safe Roads to School.
Hello.
Hello.
So, Sissy serves on the Safe Roads to School Committee as well as Principal DeWitt and other from school and our other city, county, myself who is the clinic. I guess I should say who I am. Yes, so I'm Maren Webb. It's been a long day. Thank you for taking the time. So my name is Maren Webb, I work for the Sotomayor Clinic, but I wear many hats, one of which is the Safe Roads to School Coordinator. We have funding through the statewide health improvement partnership and have worked with the school for many years on wellness initiatives, Safe Roads to School. And tonight I'm here, it's just a quick update. Sissy had asked like how to share with the committee or the school board the work of the committee and what's been happening. For many years, for probably a couple of years and then the last six months, we've been talking about intersection front of the school. As many people know, that was where Sheriff's License End ended as students were being crossed by a crossing guard. We also did crosswalk enforcement event there in May and 11 people in one hour were pulled over and that wasn't everyone that didn't yield pedestrians. Sadly, we didn't have enough officers. Tickets were not given, just clarification, it was an education event. But this intersection has been known to have issues. And to be honest, I think most intersections in our town, often times people are not yielding to pedestrians or kids. So, we had an opportunity to partner. We're already looking at doing something, what could we try out and see to make some temporary improvements, things to try. We had a chance to get a little bit of support from the state Safe Roads Program, which is why if things fell and came out of nowhere, the pop-up project at First Avenue West, we kind of heard of it, it happened a little quickly because they were saying, hey, we can help you do it, but it has to go in before school's done. So for folks who were kind of, hey, we didn't know this was happening, the school definitely was on board, nobody was blindsided that way, but I think a lot of community members were surprised when it went up. The thing that's cool about demonstration projects is it's an opportunity to try things out and to edit it as we go and evaluate. So we've already made several changes over the last, gosh, it hasn't even been a month yet, seems like forever. Including right-hand turns, which were way too tight at first, fully my bad. But we have seen, we have an online survey as well as similar evaluation pieces that are in progress right now, could be a speed study, things like that. One of the things that I think was a great takeaway already, we've had 65 people doing survey online. 98% said, we want permanently high visibility crosswalks. I think that's a great thing to hear. Here people seeing that that actually is making a difference. Other pieces of it is a mixed bag. People like it, people hate it, some think it's making it safer, some think it's making it dangerous. It's a temporary project. All the vertical elements will be out before the snow flies, for sure. And that was the groom of the county highway department. I didn't want to do a huge, this is just a little bit of an update today. We're doing more evaluation. If people have specific questions, I'm happy right now or I'm also happy to talk about it while I'm working.
And I included the links in my board report. I included the links to the survey and the links for more information. So, I have that there. But I just wanted to give you an update because there's been a lot of conversation, I think, about it and just wanted to make sure everybody knew kind of where it's a test project. You know, it's temporary, so to speak, and it's a, we're trying it out, kind of the thing. So I just wanted to make sure if you were asked by members of the public that you have information or you know where to refer them to if they have further information. So that's part of the reason why I did ask Maren to come and say a few things here during community comments.
Hopefully you've all seen them at the...
Yeah, you can.
Kind of hard to get. And I just also want to say a big thank you to Principal DeWitt. He has been an awesome partner in all of this. I mean, the whole committee as a whole. But I know, I'm sure, he's got a few phone calls about it as has the city and county and other folks. You know, one of the things is change always brings like, what is this about? And we're trying to keep kids safe, you know. Well, this is not a permanent thing, but we're trying to learn from it and figure out are there some things we can do longer term that would help keep kids safe there? And really, like anyone who's going through that intersection, which is a lot of us, whether on foot, bike, or in a car.
Thanks, Maren.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your time, thanks. I have to go make a big effort.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, Brian Hansel, Dark Skies, Grammeray.
Hi. Got some handouts for you. My name's Brian Hansel, I live here in Grammeray. And I heard from Dan that you guys were potentially talking about changing some lighting in the parking lot? So I'm here today to talk about that. I did try to format this front page to the questions that you asked, so there's some bullet points on here. I don't know if you want me to cover all of those. And I'm not sure I can do this in three minutes' time, I'm very wordy. There's a few people in here that are with me, so hopefully I can steal their time. I don't know that they did it, but... So, I'll let you guys kind of look at here, but the student benefits, I think is probably important for you guys to hear. And there are some health risks associated with some of the new modern lighting that's being put in all over the country. So, what's happening in our country right now is we're updating our old traditional lighting, which is the yellow, which is like downtown Grammeray, to this new LED lighting. And the new LED lighting is at 4,000 kelvins, which is a color temperature. So on the color temperature, we range from anywhere from 0 kelvins up to about 10,000 kelvins. The higher number you get, the bluer the light. The lower number you get, the yellower, redder the light is. So what they found is this blue light is actually causing some health risks. There's a couple different risks to it. Obesity was one of them. Cancer, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, sleep disorders, impairment of daytime functioning. There's more. In your packet, there's actually a handout from the American Medical Association that covers this in depth. So their findings on the increased risks are in there, so I encourage you to read that stuff. So, you know, that's one of the potential problems of updating lighting to the new LED. The good news is that there is some 2,700 Kelvin LED bulbs available. The other thing is that I could think of that would affect students is reducing the light pollution could actually help with your science education. I don't know how many field trips and stuff you do or if the kids study nocturnal animals or any of that, but lighting does have an effect on that. It affects our flyways so that there would be less biodiversity in the area. The one that I find really interesting is fireflies. So the more blue lighting we have, the less fireflies that show up. So it definitely affects that kind of stuff. There's a lot of research down under data and research, you can read that. And then I have a list of references and I'm happy to give you more references on that kind of stuff if you want it. And also, I know that the school doesn't have a specific astronomy program, but if there's any extracurricular activities in the future, it would be a lot easier to do it here at the school if we conform lighting to darker lightings in the right color temperatures versus taking a field trip and the additional cost to head up to the end of the trail and that sort of thing. So there is a reduction of costs there. So, but basically, I'm gonna let you guys read on that other stuff if you want. But, you know, one of the things that the community is facing right now at the city level is a push to go for an International Dark Sky Association endorsement, which would drive tourism. There's significant tourism business benefits to that, which I can cover if you want me to. I don't feel like this board is necessarily all that interested in that, but you tell me. But, I recently did a presentation at the library and it was their biggest one. 100 people showed up. And their biggest concern was quality of light with lighting. So people like it that it's dark here. And the other thing is tourism, increased tourism. But really, the concern here is if we do additional parking lot lighting or change the parking lot lighting, that light could spill from your parking lots out on County Road 6 and then spread out two to three blocks past that. They're actually running into that problem over at the hospital. So with the revised parking lot, the additional lighting spreads two to three blocks down the old Gunflunk Trail. And one of the neighbors' houses there, it reflects off a cliff in the back, so it's like daylight in their house on both directions. So the good news there was actually, we met with the board and they're working on it, so they're putting out bids in order to change their lighting to help get along with the community and to have a board willing to work with the community. That way, I thought was excellent, so... The other thing here is the increased light pollution in general. So, through the years since I've been here, Grammeray has seen some increased light pollution. I shared a story at the presentation I gave. I moved up here about decade and a half ago. And John Ammer used to own Superior Coastal Sports down there. And we projected a movie up on his building on a screen that we made from sheets. And I remember during that movie, we looked north and the northern lights were out over town. Now, you know, that's the ideal night, everybody loves that. And you could see the stars and then you turn south and you see the Milky Way. You go stand down there in that parking lot when the moon's not out now, you can hardly see the Milky Way. And you can barely see the northern lights unless it's a great display. That's 15 years in what we've lost. A little of that comes from the County Road 7 corridor. So the school, community center, hospital, a lot of it comes from the gas stations. So that's not an issue necessarily. The other issue here is what has happened when we switch these LED lights is the lighting has gotten brighter. Because it's a little less expensive to run LED lights, so the light has gotten brighter. So by keeping the light levels similar to what you have or reducing them, you're actually going to save more money with a switched LED light, so that would be good. So the recommendation here is to look for 2,000 to 2,700 Kelvin bulbs when you're putting them in and then use shielded fixtures versus the protruding fixtures. So I didn't have a chance to look at everything that's out here. It might be a mixture of fixtures currently. But we want to have the shielded. There's a pamphlet that I included that shows bad lighting versus good shielded lighting in there, so you can understand what we're talking about. And then, the additional thing is you gotta make sure that the light doesn't spill out into the roads and it's directed downwards. So, there's some solutions. The suggested solutions that I would have for you is, there's a few of them. So number one is ambient light dimmers that will dim the lights as it gets darker. So at dusk, the lights are as bright as they'll ever be. And then as we get closer to night, those lights start dimming down. That reduces your energy costs, but it also reduces light pollution and it keeps the same amount of safety. Use 2,000 to 2,700 Kelvin bulbs to reduce the health risks and reduce the distance that light travels. Blue light travels a very long distance, 2.5 to 2.7 times the amount of yellow or red lighting. And that's the same reason why our sky is blue. The blue doesn't get absorbed by the atmosphere where red and yellow wavelengths get absorbed. And then I would shield the lights to control upward and spill out towards the houses. Reduce the number of lights if possible. Parking lot engineers tend to over-engineer the number of lights that are needed. And then another solution would be possibly reducing the height of the poles. So additionally, you could turn off lights at night when they're not in use. So when people aren't in school at midnight, probably don't need to light a parking lot. Saves money, saves the night sky. So what we really, if you just want the most simplest solutions out there, I think what's gonna happen is, or what I would suggest is 2,000 to 2,700 bulbs with shielded lighting. That would be a minimum. I think what's gonna happen is, looks like Grammeray is gonna change their ordinances and then you guys would probably have to come into compliance with those ordinances anyways. So it's best just to run it off at the pass and not have to pay for it twice, so... I'd also like to hear any comments that you have, future meeting. And I'm happy to work with you guys on any of the lighting issues. If you have questions, I'm happy to come in and talk to you over the phone. My phone number, cell phone number is right on there. And I'm more than happy to meet with you guys or help you. And I know the hospital is investigating all this stuff right now, so they would be a very good resource. So Chris over there, the head of maintenance, he's getting a good education on that, so maybe you guys could hook up with him on this light stuff, so save a little bit of work.
Thank you very much. And, yeah, so we're talking about, this is part of the abatement bond, the lighting, but I don't think we don't have any firm anything, Tom, as far as what, we haven't ordered anything, like light bulbs or, right? We haven't done any of that yet, have we? Or have we? We have some, okay.
What have we ordered?
We have 4,000 with the shielded, the shielded hoods. And Dan, did you get that copy I did on the light distribution? And I don't have that with me now on what they claim that. Haven't worked with Dan here the last couple of days.
Oh, okay.
Been in touch with him, so...
Okay. Will we eliminate, do we have, I've been bending the question a little too much, so... Do we have dark spots where you feel your way to the cars or?
Well, right now, no. With the lighting we have back here now, it is terrible. I mean, it's to the age where the ballasts are gone, they're 400 watt bulbs. So we started this project as part of the bond. Okay, so deferred maintenance, so that is why this is already going. Then we picked up more stuff for the projects, or projects going forward, which now brings us to the abatement bond. So, which brought those parking lot lights into what we're looking for. So this has been going on since April, so that's what's bringing us to here now.
Okay.
One of the nice things we can, the other pieces that we can look at, as mentioned by Brian too, is we don't need our lights on at the maintenance.
No, well, we can, we also can put...
We do need our athlete kids come back. Sorry, we do need, we do need them sometimes.
See, we can put motion detectors on them where they will dim down. And then as the bus comes through or whatever it is, they'll light back up and then they'll dim back down. We certainly can add that feature to it.
Or reprogram on Facebook, you know, that Tuesday night our kids are at such and such a place.
And everything does have a time where we can turn on and off.
Give them a flex and...
Okay.
The one thing that was mentioned at the hospital that I thought was a good point about the light fixtures that turn them off and on, that you just gotta be aware that sometimes it could be flashing. So the head of maintenance over there said that you want to avoid that. He didn't think that was...
Yeah, and we do have that in our student parking lot where they do dim down. So when we did that project a couple of years ago. And so far, there hasn't been any issues. Not to say that it won't be, but...
Yeah, it sounds like you guys did it right though.
If a raccoon decides to walk. Well, thank you for all the information, Brian. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because I would stay longer, my dad just got out of surgery and have a hurt back yet, so I've gotta bail.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Let me know if you need any other information.
Definitely. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, 6...
I'll call you. Okay, it sounds good. Yeah, thanks. No, I got it. Okay, I got it.
Okay, 6.0 student highlights. 6.1 junior track athlete, Jack Housner.
We just wanted to recognize Jack. I understand that we might be in Alaska or someplace like that, quite a distance away, but, you know, he did a great job. He took second place in the 110-yard hurdles at the Section 7A Track Meet. He then competed in the prelims of the state meet on June 8th down at Hamlin University in St. Paul. He didn't advance to the finals, but really proud of his state tournament appearance and how he represented their school. He's fantastic, we got a great track team, we got great kids. And I think it says it all the more that he did it by running through the hallways and running around town and hauling the hurdles out of the gym and setting them up and, you know, without a track. So it's pretty big accomplishment. So if Jack's watching, thank you, Jack. Good job.
Nice job.
Yeah, so 7.0 is administrative reports. 7.1 principal's report.
I guess the one part I want to highlight in here was, I'm pretty excited here. We had a lot of debate the last few meetings about, you know, our trail system and whatnot with that. Board members might recognize these signs. They've been in the school for a few years, but they say, like that says white pine. And there's one that says spruce, you know, things like that.
Oh, but we should get you two away.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a great idea. We have one of these right now by red pine. Example, he walked past the bridge onto our trails. But this is one of the things that the Conservation Corps is gonna come up and do for us in July, July 16th, that week. We have 40 hours that we're awarded. They're gonna improve our trail systems, put down some bog bridges for the kids to walk over the swampy areas. There's one bridge in the back that doesn't have a handrail. You guys have gone back, they're kind of bouncy there. They're gonna firm that up, make it a little more protected. Talking with Mr. Nelson, Mr. Dorr, myself and the teachers, and we have a forest committee that kind of works with our school forest and stuff. We kind of selected a spot where if we can find grant funding, we're gonna put up a outdoor classroom. And they're gonna cut a trail, trail right back behind you guys there. A lot of our preschoolers and younger elementary kids will do little science explorations in these woods and then go out back. And so we're gonna map them and it's very exciting for me and for the forest committee and so I just wanted the board to be aware of that. I also wanted to, just as an aside, I wanted to encourage the board members and any members in the public that may not be aware of this. But right now, the administration is looking through our handbooks. We have handbooks and policies, we update every year. They include the employee's staff handbook, coaches handbook, our elementary kids handbook and our secondary kids handbook. And we're gonna be sending those out to the public to look at because there's a couple of areas that we are gonna be debating here in July at the board meeting. I want to make sure you guys feel welcome to reach out to me or Dr. Brown or Mr. Dorr to look at that and also for the community to give us feedback. Some of the main areas to think about when you see those handbooks are attendance policy and the cell phone policy. We're looking very closely at cell phones in the school and how they detract from the environment. And a lot of schools are doing this in Minnesota now. And then the attendance as well to make sure we're helping families that are having a hard time with kids getting to school. And so that'll be out hopefully in the next few weeks for folks to look at. And then please let me know if there's questions.
Just want to make sure people, give people a heads up on it because we don't wanna spring it on them right before school. So I think the more, so the more we can get out that it's, you know, it's cell phone policy and attendance policy to make sure that it's, people are aware of it, I think is better for parents and for students. So, I think that's a great idea.
So it's communications?
Yes.
The radio?
Yes.
Joe Fredericks? Joe, you gotta know about this.
Yeah. We need to make sure we get it out there.
Yeah, we use our communication.
Yep. How do you want some ideas on how to get these messages?
Yeah. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes. 7.2 assistant principal report. And so it's a written report in there, did you have anything to, okay. So then, 7.3 superintendent's report.
If you get the opportunity, maybe even after the meeting or next time you're in the building, they just finished pouring the slab in our science room today. So after that cures, then they'll be really zipping along, getting that inside done. They poured the footings, or you'll hear more on our report from ARI, but they also poured for the walls. Today, graduation went quite well. Nice celebration there. Big thing coming and it'll be second semester next year, but the Hibbing Community College is gonna be offering a culinary program. And so, things are moving forward there. That'll start in January, I think it's around the end of semi-days. I sent the board some information regarding that. And so that's exciting that, you know, the great facility that we're gonna be having come this fall will be able to really be fully used. Actually, with our classes and the culinary program through Hibbing Community College is gonna be busy from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. Should be great. That's where we built it.
Yes.
And so our students will, as many students that want to avail themselves of that class?
That would be, for them, that would be a PSEO class if they took the Hibbing Community College.
Oh, right, but otherwise?
But during the day.
Otherwise, during the day, yeah. The whole second half of the day, that is Jason Gash will be teaching courses. How many courses does he have coming? Four to do, so...
So you mentioned in your email that there was different categories for how the rental fee was determined?
Yes, we have three categories. There's like a nonprofit, there's a for-profit, and then there's a, almost like a non-res...
Non-cocking.
Non-cock, yeah. And so they fit into the one category that'll be used for them for all of our higher...
That's similar to the ACA.
What's that?
The ACA, we have some sort of agreements.
Yep, we have rental, rental for using the ACA as well. If we're doing it, and then Sue Hennessy, we have who operates that schedule for the ACA.
So I guess one thing I would just keep, you know, just something to put in the back of our minds as that plays out, since it's new. A cooking class is like fairly like, it's more than just using a space. It's pretty resource intensive, like gas and electricity in particular because they're running stoves presumably that are either gas or electricity powered. So, just how that sort of like, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure we get appropriately compensated.
We had those conversations and that's exactly, they felt the same way.
Okay.
So we'll be monitoring that to see if we have a jump up and then we'll be addressing it.
Okay.
Yep, so they're aware of that.
Good. Great.
And then Lori and myself, I'm quite busy getting the budget ready for the group. We'll see that today. And then that kind of leads into the goals. You know, we've been working on the budget and that, as I mentioned, will be provided today. Also, summer lunch programs in full force. We read the paper, they made an error there. They said it was being provided by the YMCA, it's being provided by a state program run through our school. And so we've addressed...
What was that?
The paper had a misquote or misinformation.
Oh, the lunch program is the school, so the YMCA?
Yeah, and it's a state program.
And it's a state program?
Yes.
It's not the YMCA, it's school.
It's a school.
Just clarifying.
Yes.
And it's very successful. Every time I try to get in here during that breakfast time or lunchtime, there's a lot of kids. Do you know the number of ballpark? Not to be on the spot, right?
She hit right away, she hit our high numbers from last year. She was in 70, 80, she's hit 105, I think was her highest, or might have even gone higher now.
I checked in the first two weeks worth of numbers and I think there was peaks of 80 for lunch. And that was with our summer school students and some of the YMCA kids camp.
And Bible.
Vacation Bible school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's incredibly successful.
I happened to have an opportunity as I was waiting the other day outside here to speak with Kelly, who was, is cooking for that. And she just wishes we had more numbers, more numbers. She knows there are a lot more kids that should be eating. So...
It's free.
It's free.
It's free. Come eat, it's free.
School age, children up through 18?
Yeah.
Zero to 18.
Zero.
Zero to 18.
That's my understanding, zero to 18.
So any family can bring their family?
And they do not have to be residents. I mean, just show up.
And that's two times a day, five days a week?
Yes, breakfast and lunch. Uh, no, four days a week.
8:15 to 9:15 is breakfast, something like that. 11:15 to 12:15 is lunch.
Okay, great.
I think it's important for people to know when to, when to show up.
Yes, yes.
I have posters up all over town.
Thank you.
Our summer school, you know, going into our next goal, we, for academic achievement and such, we have summer school going on and those kids are, they come out for the meals as well, those meals. Also, we have credit recovering, so those kids are eligible to come in as well. Yep, and registration's been, has taken place and scheduling is ready for the fall. And then the positive school-community climate, we just got word that our PBIS has funded and our report, the group, the team that put that all together did a great job. So we got accolades from the state for that. And that will be continuing in through next year with our Viking Way.
Great. Okay. All right, 8.0, 8.1 is the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull for discussion? If not, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, 9.0 is discussion action items. Okay, nine point zero is discussion action items. And so, um, we have, um, do we want, should, Steve Pumper, do you, should I do the resolutions first, or do you?
No, we have to.
Do discussion first.
Hold the, um, public hearing on, on the, and.
Oh, so here we go, thank you, Pam has written me the script that I should read.
Uh.
All right, so nine point one, huh, at this time, we will be taking any public comments regarding the proposed abatement bond. So does anybody have any comments regarding the proposed abatement bond? Okay, there being no comments, um, I.
Steve wants to talk, I guess he can, before you have the resolutions out.
It's completely up to you, you just wanna summary of what we're, what you're having the public hearing for.
Yes, Mr. Steve Pumper, yes, introduce, come on up, introduce yourself.
Sure, I will. Thank you, Madam Chair Board Members, Superintendent, I'm Steve Pumper with PMA Securities. Um, and on your agenda, um, later on, soon here, um, you have three resolutions in front of you, um, that are all really tied into selling, um, some bonds that the funds you'd be using for would be to repair some parking lots here in your district. There is a, a very specific Minnesota state statute that's very narrowly defined for school districts, that the, that's the, the only reason you can issue these and use the proceeds for are for parking lots. And it's because it's a public use for not just the school district, but the community as a, as a whole. Um, so you're able to do that without, um, any voter approval, but it needs board action. Um, so what, um, what's one requirement is, is that you need to publish the fact that you're having a hearing in your, um, legal newspaper, which you did. Can I actually tell you the date that that happened? On, uh, May twenty-sixth, and that was in the Cook County Herald News. Um, then you have to have the public hearing and allow public com- comment, which, um, um, Chair Lundie just asked for. Um, and, um, yeah, I suppose at this point in time, it's, it's appropriate to let the public know what would happen, then their, uh, the properties, taxes are abated, it's just a, a legal term. But, um, there's going to be, um, additional taxes, um, placed on there for, for the district to be able to collect those dollars to pay back the bonds. In this case, it's very small, you're, you're planning on issuing sixty-five thousand dollars worth of, up to sixty-five thousand dollars worth of bonds to generate roughly fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of construction proceeds. The tax impact on that, um, we're estimating to be fifty cents a year for two-year period of time on a fifty thousand dollar home, or a dollar eighteen. Um, if a person owns a home that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, and again, that's for a two-year period of time. So it's a pretty small, um, you know, increase or impact, and again, what will happen is, you'll be able to use those funds and Tom and the rest of the district to repair the parking lots. And approve them, not just repair and approve them. So that's, that's a summary.
Steve, is this non-resident or non-home-stated people also?
Yes, yep, all taxes participate in paying this, uh, I'm sorry, not all taxes, all property owners participate, commercial as well, yep.
NTC, net tax.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Getting the information up to the public.
Yes, definitely.
Right, and, and I actually probably should've said too, that this, um, will be the third series of abatement bonds that you've issued for the exact same purpose. Um, you've issued, um, um, some in two thousand and fifteen and some in two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Okay, so then I need a motion to approve the tax abatement resolution as stated in the board packet.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, so the only concern I have is about the lighting, obviously. Um, and so I spoke with, uh, Mr. Nelson about that, and he explained, like he just did a few minutes ago, that this was, the ball for this got rolling a while ago. Um, and so there, you know, he had all the spec sheets for the light bulbs, whatever, they're four thousand K, you know, so it's like, if we wanted to go down this path of not, you know, having the dimmer lights, so to speak, the softer lights, um, in order to, to do that right now with these lights, you know, we've already, it would, there would be a little bit of, of juggling, I don't, if, you know, if it's, we'd have to go back to the electricians and see if we could swap them out, return, and you know, there would be, and I don't know if there'd be some sort of a cost penalty to that, or if it would just be like a, an annoyance penalty, to do that sort of thing.
Restart possible.
Yeah, um, so, I mean, I guess the way that I come at this is, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of, of that sort of initiative. And I guess my, the way I look at it is, if we're gonna do it, we might as well start doing it now, um, even if that does cause us a little bit of an inconvenience. I don't know what that inconvenience is, you know, if it's talking about really losing a lot of money or whatever, then, you know, maybe we just do our best the next time around. But my understanding is these lights last for a really long time, so it's kinda like, you know, it might be worth a little bit of pain now for twenty years worth of not having to wait. So that, that's sort of my, my comment on it. And I don't know if that plays into us, like, if that's specifically, it didn't seem like it was specifically outlined in the abatement here. So I don't know if that's like a discussion that can play out yet after this, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I agree, 'cause I didn't read any specifics in there either.
We, we can, uh, we'll make some calls and see if we can do an exchange for the bonds.
Okay, and I do think we do need to do our homework, um, if, i- if it's, if it's true that the city is going to pass some sort of an ordinance, we should probably do our homework to, to see where that's at, and I mean, I don't know if it's, that's just a phone call by the city, excuse me, but, like you said,
Yeah, we call city.
we should probably make sure we do our homework before we get so far that we can't, um, change something, so, um, um, we should check with them, so. Thoughts from anybody else?
I don't, I agree with both Dan and Sissy, you know, and again, it's not the specifics in the abatement, but this is, you know, let's fix it. So I think we can give, um, the administration, say here, this is what we'd like you to do, continue to research, let's not quick, put the bulbs up tonight after, after it gets, if it gets approved.
Okay.
So, so yeah, I definitely agree with you guys on that.
Okay.
I'm on the same page as Dan, so, yes.
Any other discussion? We have to do roll call votes for these, for the, uh, fin- uh, paperwork part of this, the financial piece of it, so I'm gonna do a roll call. Um, so Lundie, aye.
Jansen, aye.
Gettle, aye.
White, aye.
Shirley, aye.
Okay, and, uh, um, resolution is approved then unanimously. All right, then, we've gotta do this a couple times here, nine point one B, so I need a motion to approve resolution authorizing the sale of abatement bonds as stated in the board packet.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, um, we're gonna do a roll call again, Lundie, aye.
Jansen, aye.
Gettle, aye.
White, aye.
Shirley, aye.
Okay, the resolution is approved. Nine point one C, I'm looking for a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution as stated in the board packet.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on that one? Okay, roll call again, Lundie, aye.
Jansen, aye.
Gettle, aye.
White, aye.
Shirley, aye.
Okay, the resolution is approved. Okay, so we're all good, we've got signatures collected?
We, we are good.
Okay.
So the plan is, I'm sorry, just is that, uh, um, the bonds are going to be, um, um, sold here in July. We'll make your money, uh, if there's success with the sale, it'll be directly placed actually in August. And actually, that's the reason you just passed that last resolution, is so that you can start all your work, and then just reimburse your general fund for the payments you've made once the law.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan, for your time.
Thanks, thanks for coming, Steve, appreciate it.
Questions, Steve?
Yeah.
Who might be a buyer of our bonds?
Um, it's very likely it'll be another, um, in a social district actually. Yep, um, we've, we've approached, um, for board members, uh, especially remember all this, um, past the last two abatement bonds. We approached, sorry, we approached your local banks, three of them up in this area, and none of them, uh, for the last two bonds were interested at all in purchasing. So we had success with other resources, actually, by.
And the interest, is it anticipated?
It'll be bid on what they, um, you know, we'll bid event date, let me just look at our estimating, over those tax impacts. Sorry. Wanna buy them?
No.
No questions.
Well, I'm just curious.
No, that's fine, no, again, so they're, well, they're, I know, sixty-five thousand. We're anticipating, um, between three and three and a quarter percent. So we'll see what happens.
Great, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, nine point two culinary arts and science room update. Ryan.
That's me.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me again, I'm happy to be here today. Um, yeah, so just to give you guys a quick update, so, uh, Dr. Crado kinda hit a couple of the construction milestone highlights, so we have the slab port in the science area. All the blow slab plumbing is in, inspected, it's all backfilled, um, we had some hangups with the concrete mix design, so that's part of the challenge of living in this part of the country, and so we have limited suppliers available. So we were trying to do something a little bit different, um, with the concrete than what they're used to seeing, it's something we do in other parts of the state pretty regularly. And so it took a little bit of, uh, I don't know what the right word is, but a li- a little bit of extra work, I guess, just to get things going in the right direction on that. Basically, we made, we did some things with the concrete in order to speed up the process where we can be able to put down the flooring finish at an earlier time. Typically, you have to let the moisture cure out of the concrete, which can take a long time, and so we've got some additives in there that they just haven't worked with in the past, not a big deal. Um, we got it all resolved, and so everything is good, so that pore was a little bit later than we would've liked to have had that. But what they did in the process is they shuffled more manpower to the addition, so as you can see clearly, the front of the building's starting to look a little bit different. Uh, probably since I was here a month ago, um, you know, that's all removed now. They have, the foundations got poured today, and so they're kinda rolling along pretty well with that. So we should start to see concrete block coming up fairly shortly and see it starting to come out of the ground, so we'll start backfilling and start coming out of the ground. Um, generally speaking, I think the science package is still on schedule to be here, um, kinda the middle of July. Um, so that all is kinda flowing along pretty well in that area, and I think we're good there. Um, we approved change order one, which was kinda the cost reduction change order that we talked about before. So we finally got all the paperwork together with the contractors, and there's a couple of line items in there that we're still waiting on pricing, and so we finally got that back and got that processed, I think, just this, early this week. So that's all good to go, um, thanks to some of the diligence of your staff, so, Mr. Nelson here, um, you were able to find some additional savings just through some things that he was able to do for the district, and so his work to take out, uh, working with the, uh, local supplier to pull that underground propane tank, saved the district fifty-five hundred dollars. So, um, yeah, kudos to you guys and Tom for the extra work to make that sort of thing happen, to just kinda keep things on track, and I think he worked on a Saturday, just throw that in there. Um, so that's kinda the real basic update, um, I think that all the materials and everything that we've got coming, uh, there's no known lead time issues right now relative to our project schedule. Obviously, that's kind of a key, key thing on all of this, um, and so I know that there's some concerns about schedule right now. Um, we did have some initial delays on the project just because of some unknown hazardous materials that we found. So we lost about a week of time due to that, uh, they had some issues, for whatever reason, um, the asbestos monitoring wasn't clearing in part of the space, and so they were kinda held up there, um, and we had finally, like I said, some additional materials in the culinary arts area that had to be removed prior to them getting in there and doing the general demolition and taking that space down, so that held us up a little bit. Um, any of the other delays at this point are just, you know, I think it's just the nature of construction and remodeling, and so now that we're out of the ground, I think we're kinda past unforeseen conditions. Um, there have been a few, I'd call them minor, things that we've run into, nothing, you know, serious, nothing that's really held up progress, but just some minor changes. So going back, you know, we do have that contingency for a reason, I know that was a concern. Um, so we do have a few small items that have been added back in at this point in time to address, you know, when you dig a hole and you don't know what's gonna be there, um, those sorts of things. But otherwise, in general, I think it's going along very well. Uh, Max Gray has been, uh, doing a good job, I think Scott's been doing a really good job, he's our, um, job superintendent of communicating with the district and with us, and doing what he can to keep pushing the project along and make sure that they can, um, hopefully make up some of those days, that's their intention. So hopefully their, the, that week at the beginning was a little tough, I don't know that we're gonna be able to make that up, but any of the other delays caused by various things, our intention is, is to make that time up and still hit our targets, so. It's yet to be seen, we can't say for sure, um, but, you know, they do realize that, uh, as we progress forward, we only have about seven weeks left before they're supposed to be done. We most likely, um, what'll happen most likely is we probably will, I think August twelfth is the substantial completion date in the contract. Because of the abatement work, which isn't part of their contract, that's a separate contract, and that delay, there probably will be an extension of the timeline that will be an authorized change in the contract, because it's kinda out of their control, and so we can't hold them responsible for that. But we've been pretty fortunate, um, and I'm not gonna, with, with weather, and I shouldn't say that, because as I think last time I said something like that at the meeting, they cut a conduit under the slab, and I said they hadn't hit anything, but, um, you know, fortunately, they, it's gone pretty well that way, and they've been able to kinda keep plugging away, which is one of the benefits of having some good inside work as well, so.
Are they, are they, when did you Friday, or?
You know what, I don't even know.
If the workload is there, they're working five eleven-hour days.
Yeah, they're.
Six o'clock every morning, they're here until probably six o'clock at night. This week with the quarrying, most of them left today after the floor was done, they have their finishers here and their job suit is still here until that's done and done. So this week it was four tons for them.
So what you'll see is in that science area, there's gonna be a little bit of a, there's gonna be not much happening in the next week, because we want that concrete to cure out. There's a curing process that we're making them do, just minimize any cracking potential and that sort of thing. And so they're gonna have to stay off that slab for about a week, uh, before they'll be able to get in there, but once they're able to get in there, they should be able to roll pretty quick, um, on that area. But in the meantime, they're gonna keep going on the addition, so that should, like you said, you should start to see that in the next week or two, it's gonna start to look like something other than a hole in the ground, a muddy mess, so, any other questions?
Well, where are they staying when they're here? Just a curiosity.
Not my problem.
No, no, I mean, they, they come up with, will they be goes, or if they have cabins?
No, there is, is one gentleman's rent, renting a cabin two houses down from here. Um, they're up at the landing, I think, or whatever it's called now.
Yeah.
Um, I think they have two places up there, and then as the subs come in, they're all staying at the hotels.
So we're driving economy?
Yeah.
We're good.
They're, they're buying dinner and they're buying other stuff, and yeah, exactly. Yep.
Great. Any other questions for Ryan?
Fantastic, well, that was easy.
Oh, and I just to back up, so it wasn't on the agenda, but just to, um, the other project we still had kinda open was the bus garage, and so I stopped by there, um, just to not forget about that and the discussion, and so that contract is still open. Um, the last bit of work, there was a couple little issues with it, so we're gonna work with them to get that corrected, but we did get all kinda their final paperwork. We're gonna hold that last payment until they get the last couple items taken care of, so, um, hopefully, when I'm here next month, that should be done and done and closed out, and should be good to go there, and I know Lori has some paperwork she needs, and I actually have that, copies of that already, but I'm not gonna give it to her until we close out the contract.
She'll get it.
But I know she needs it for her auditing and all that good stuff, so, that'll go away.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Big question, though. Not, not to you, Ryan, but, uh, I hear from, I hear from some community people, they don't know what's going on, they wanna see more pictures, more pictures of what's going on, they want.
They're on our website.
They're, they're out on our website.
They'd like more, I'm just passing along.
Well, only so much goes on in the day, I mean, the science room has been at a standstill because of the floor and culinary arts.
So can you take picture of the, we'll take picture of the slab?
Still did already.
I, I.
I took it out yesterday.
Pam's doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, she is.
Thank you, I'm just passing along.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what you're talking about.
Construction.
Exactly. Thank you.
We'll start progressing much quicker, I think, no, let's take it out of the ground, and you'll start seeing check for different trades on site, if, um, it'll. Those thirteen more things.
Okay. Thank you. All right, nine point three to approve the expenditure revenue report for May twenty eighteen.
I'll make motion to approve it.
One second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just so, so that's May, so obviously we still need to put in June and in June we have um you know, end of year payout for salaries and such and then just wrapping up the end of the year, making know the P O S are closed, so everything will be buttoned up. Uh and so the next board report, you'll have that. And then there will still be some outstanding things. A lot of things still will win, uh special arts uh bills typically running through July and so by the end of August and the September, we'll have the recap of F Y eighteen.
Any questions or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, nine point four bond update.
If you go through there, you can see in security and technology, we did the we did some adjustment there and under security and technology, we transferred some of that, those funds uh to the bus garage. So when we get to the bus garage, you'll see that that's at zero. Under the re-roof project, nothing's happening currently there. Uh the only thing will be some more planning through A R I. And you can see now, if you get to the bus garage, you'll see that we have that ended up zeroing that one out. And then uh vehicles, no more vehicles for Mr. Nelson. But we still have, still have some funding available in there. Uh deferred maintenance. You can see a few things, some bills were paid there. Uh last purchase there, we did get some ceiling tiles in there, um some waste, and then we purchased our art tables for the art room. And then coming up, science and la- uh the science and the big, the big project. And you can see that we've been paying bills there. We still have funds obviously available and that. We're just continuing to move forward with that project.
Any specific bond questions? Okay. Nine point five to approve F Y twenty nineteen budget.
Make motion to approve.
One second, that.
Okay, and we're gonna have a presentation with PowerPoint. Dr. Crado and our Lori.
I can see. Yeah.
If I'm right.
Do you want me to put it in full screen?
That'd be great.
I'll talk.
Okay.
All right, so obviously this is uh today, so uh let's uh get this up. So we're looking at next year's budgets over F Y nineteen. Do you think Sissy could move back a little bit? We can see. Chair on the way there.
Can everybody see?
On your roll. All right, so we've got some information, just kind of some one oh one school finance for some of you might be born, but I hope that this will be the information that you need. So budget overall, it's composed of multiple funds. We primarily look at these funds, uh one through five, general fund, food service, transportation, community education and capital. I shared with the board in the past, funds one, three and five, we break out. Um actually, our whole Arrowhead region breaks out, but at the state level, if they talk about, or if you go onto M D E's website and you look at our general fund, it's funds one, three and five for our district. Fund two is food service, fund four, community ed, which are separate funds there. So what funds one, and I just explained that, what one, three and five are, those are the general funds. They can be shared in some respects, as you can see. Um we already have them broken down into three. Uh fund two is food service and fund four, community ed. Those are separate and they are, they are separate. We can take money from either one of those funds and put them into our general fund. Though there are some exceptions. We have had time in the past where they have allowed us to take some funds from community ed and put those in the general fund. Uh food service, mi- mind you, we can always go the other way. We can take money from the general fund and put those into fund two or fund four, but we can't go the other way.
And at times we are required to.
And at times we're required to. Um fund one, uh there are some specific things. So there's a two percent set aside for staff development, that's in state statute. That's restricted along with some other miscellaneous items that are, you know, little pockets of money that we can't touch, that's specific for certain. For example, Q comp goes into fund one. But Q comp, we can't touch. It's specific for that whole Q comp program. It's another one. Capital five, which is capital, there's some restrictions there. Long-term facility maintenance is one. Um we also have some health and safety, the tachytonite funds, those are specified for certain things. Uh we have a capital outlay and I can't remember, I think it was something done back in the nineties.
It was the big um lease for the H V A, H V A C system or whatever that that we're paying for that um project. Yeah, I I pay that all the way through twenty twenty-three, I think is.
Yeah, it's interesting when we went, go to the big meetings, all of a sudden they talk about, everybody's got capital money and then you see Laura's hand and they go, oh yeah, Cook County, you don't. And then we move on. But no, they do explain. The Cook County had made this arrangement that over, I think it was like fifteen years or something, that our capital outlay that is restricted would be to pay off this. So our overall budget, all the different funds make up the overall in the end of budget development, all the different budgets are combined for the overall budget. We focus in on one, three and five in our process. Once again, two and four are those standalones. But they, once again, combine into everything.
So I have a quick, quick question about that two percent for staff development. Um and that is obviously a different number based on how big the fund is, you know, if it's a percentage. And then when is that determined? Like, it's two percent, like at any snapshot in time of that fund or like, you know what I mean?
No, there's a specific
So it's two percent of our basic formula, basic allowance, and that changes each year based on our student count.
Okay.
So I make sure that we use enough based on where our students' count is. And then when those numbers really come through from M D E.
And that's our October first count?
Right, yep. We don't get our real funding final. They're doing cleanup payments based on the kids from last year. Well into October, November kind of period, so.
So October first is a big day for us because that's, that's the calendar.
Gotcha.
That's the day
So we count them and that's the with the number that we submit to the state and that's what they base all of our funding numbers.
But they they do base a lot of eight, like a lot of the past year bill based on what our actual attendance and what our actual kids were. Yeah, so like a levy, you know, our levy, you'll see a lot of adjustments. And a lot of those adjustments are coming because, oh wait, we have new students last year than we thought we would.
Or less.
Or less, right. And so we're usually taking the more conservative approach when we do the budget to say, we're not sure we're gonna get those ten extra kids.
Yeah.
So we budget without them, so.
Good question.
So in the end, you, Lori and I can sit down, look at the numbers, we can balance the budget with all different funds, uh but we need to make sure that we have the money in the right fund. For example, say for example, the food service is just doing great. Okay, and it's seven thousand to the positive, but the general fund is, you know, negative. Overall, the budget may look great, but we don't have money to pay our teachers, you know, I'm just using that as an example. And so the budget by numbers looks nice and pretty. Hey, we're balanced, but we're really out of balance. And so that's why we need to look at funds one, three and five as a board to really focus in on.
Sorry to distract you one more time. The lease fee for Hibbing Community College, what fund does it?
That will go into fund, our general fund.
It does, okay. It doesn't, it's not community ed or food service.
Well, wait, is it gonna go, oh wait.
I do building rentals through community ed.
So that actually will
But they will be paying us for some of our custodial time. So some of that money will go into fund one to reimburse us for the custodians that we might have to have.
So that full amount won't go just to
Right.
Community ed.
But building in, in most situations, like somebody's renting the gym or whatever, those are all built through fund four with community ed.
Unless there's a specific, for example, if it's a non-school day, we charge, I think it's a fifty dollar fee for, and that's, that's pretty blind charge for civilians. So that will go directly into fund one for this.
But those are all good questions.
Yeah, great question.
What?
So now we're into the proposed F Y nineteen uh budget. So you can see our expenses there for the general fund, fund change. And then our, oh.
I'm sorry. I thought there's more not showing up. There's just a line right on the bottom that we can't see. I don't know if I can spell that out.
It's like when it's rendering okay on a smaller screen online.
Yeah, on the smaller screen looks good.
Okay, so the bottom line there on the smaller screen there.
So you can see the revenue, the expense. We've got like, something happened.
It it um
Yeah, it moved.
It, it's when we did it in the full screen mode or whatever, took it out and put it in a PowerPoint.
All right, so the revenue for funds one is the six million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one. The expense is five point nine million. And so the fund change is to the positive and this is fund one of three hundred thousand dollars. In transportation, our revenue is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, almost four hundred and sixty thousand. Our expense is four hundred and sixty thousand. Uh the change there is the negative of one thousand and twenty-four dollars. And in fund five, capital, we have a revenue of two hundred and seventy-one thousand and expense of eighty-six thousand. The reason our expenses are so low is because we're, most of our capital stuff is coming out of the bond. We're not doing a lot in there. And so we have a fund change there, positive one hundred and eighty-four, almost one hundred and eighty-five. So overall, our fund change, we're to the positive, uh proposed budget of a positive four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty. Which would then go into our fund balance. So the general fund, when you look at fund one, that is the majority of our employees, everybody except for our bus drivers, when you get down to it. Transportation obviously is, you know, fuel costs and the info bussing. And then all of our drivers and mechanic. And then the cap, who we talked about that, we have that payment that we do.
There, it was able to somewhat fix it.
Yep, you can, you can see all the work.
Any questions? This is really what you're gonna be looking at.
I have a question on that. So half a million dol- half a million dollars to the good. Does the state or the auditors look at that and go, how did that happen all of a sudden?
Well, the auditors can really dig in and see the detail and the auditors will
Do they, but do they, do they, is that a red flag to them saying, geez, maybe you should be spending more money?
Well, the, one of the
How was this happening?
One of the things that we have is we have a fund balance policy that we're trying to meet. And so we are meeting our goals and so this is part of meeting our goals. And so we have that to, they, they can say, hey, wait a second, you've got way too much revenue. Well, no, we're, we're working, we're building ours up to meet our, our guidelines that we have set forth in policy.
And and really, we can explain quite a bit of that based on our referendum. The eight hundred dollars per pupil.
Per pupil, yeah.
And and then, like you said, we're not spending as much capital because we've been using the bond money to do things. I've kind of been hoarding, you know, the L T F M funds because in the future, we're gonna need those L T F funds for
What is L T F?
L T.
Uh long-term facilities.
Secure.
Yeah, so trying to save those and build up an account then for a future roof in hopes that we don't have to go back and get another bond or something.
I I'll just share with you, um there's another district they have their fund balance. They have over eight million dollars. And they're not a big district. What they were working on was saving money in their capital and then gonna go out to the voters. But they don't have to ask for eight million dollars extra. They could take eight million dollars of what they wanted to do, uh they were looking at building a new, new facility. And so they had been, you know, penny pinching, saving and saving in order to, you know, move forward.
Well, I suppose if you have enough to, you know, you could buy some bonds from another district, you know, if you had that much extra, you could have kind of invested.
Back in the heyday, like twenty-five years ago, that's pretty much what did take place. We actually, school districts would take their money that they got and invest. And in your budget, you would actually see a line of interest. And then we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars you could get in interest every year. But then, you know, inflation has changed our world.
But this money, I mean, we do have a significant amount of money in the fund balance. I mean, it's some money, right?
It's some, it's, it's, we've always had like a percentage goal and like how, if the money stopped flowing from the state, how much longer could we run this goal, basically, is what the question has always been.
And the goal is like seventeen percent or something.
Which is really about two months.
But that, but that's actually, but that is cash that we just have to get a bank account?
Not necessarily.
No.
That is cash that the state owes us, that is cash that we, it's, it's, that's one of the things that a lot of people say, oh, but the school has a healthy fund balance. That doesn't mean it's money that I could access tomorrow. It's, it's, it snapshot in time when we close the books at the end of July or June. And the auditors come and help do the audit and come up with the number of this is what your, it's almost like what your net worth is from a standpoint, as opposed to money in the bank.
Gotcha. So even that, okay, this is where I was kind of going with that. It's like, well, aren't we at least, isn't it sitting in like a money market account or are we getting nominal interest?
Yes, yes. So Steve Pumper, Steve Pumper has been, in his organization, has been a huge help. Um they helped me run our cash flow model. And so I tell them, hey, I'm getting money from the county this month and, oh, I've got a big bill for this coming up, right? And they'll look at that cash flow with me and say, hey, we can invest a million dollars because you have this bond money, this six million dollar bond money that I'm not paying out anything yet because they haven't made, they haven't finished enough on the, so Steve will help me and do some investments. Um we do have to be careful that we're not making more, like, they got, what is it, arbitrage that you take more from the county, the taxpayers and, oh, we're gonna go make money off of that.
Sure.
There's a certain limit that we're limited to because we're holding other people's money essentially. So Steve, that's where Steve really provides value.
A big time thing, you know, for example, for the six point, well, we know we're not gonna spend it tomorrow. So um he can take
Chunks.
Chunks of it and say, okay, this money, we're, we're gonna invest it in three months.
Right.
You'll have it available for you to spend. But at the same time, we got three months' worth of of interest done. You know, if it's three million dollars that we invest or whatever happens to be. What do we have next? Okay, so fund two for food service.
That's how it looks.
Oh. Got squished. All right, so you can see there though, you can see the revenue is uh four hundred and forty-six. Expense four hundred and seventy-nine with a fund deficit of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty. The state told us we need to spend money. And so we're spending money. Uh we increased some hours for some of our folks, for Kelly specifically. And so that's added some efficiencies and help in the kitchen for uh get, taking care of business as far as what we do in the kitchen. Um some other things, we are getting our refrigerator and cooler, next month, the refrigeration units. We have been, almost every other year, we've had a repair. So we're getting new ones coming in July. And so we spent, that's one of the big pieces there. And then I believe it's a, it was a warming, warming oven that had been, the unit kept getting, shorting out and actually, um we're very happy with our electrician who came and said, well, And actually, we're very happy with our electrician who came and said, well, I can make it work again, uh, but this might be the last time. And so, we, we have a new warming oven coming in, so updating, getting what they need as far as equipment. And then, like I mentioned, we added some hours which have made it, uh, not so stressful in the kitchen as well.
So, this is one of the things, to your point, Chris, that they, state said, you have too much money.
Yep. And, and, and we're not supposed to be making any money.
We're not supposed to be making money in food service.
Food service, you wanna have-
Break even.
Right.
As close as you can, so, we have an increased food, lunch costs, and then purchasing some of this equipment.
Yeah, I think we have not increased our, we, we have to come to the board every year, and if we don't come to you, ask me for a change in our, our meal cost, then we're, we're staying the same.
Right.
And so, we, I, Cam, do you remember how long it's been?
It's a couple of years. And so, we're actually, we actually had that balance and it increased last year, and our auditors are like, how are you increasing, you know? And then most schools don't, and so, then the state finally caught up to us and said, hey, wait, you have more than three months operating. So, I couldn't really justify adding pricing. Next, next year, we may have to after spending so much money.
But for example, even this food, this summer food program? We're easily paying-
We're break, we broke even though, we did better than broke even last year too.
Yeah, we may a little bit, and that wasn't the intention, but-
When somebody leaves, when somebody leaves or a student has a negative balance, I assume we don't have any staff that have a negative balance. Is that figured into this, or is that, how do we, or that's just a separate pot saying, this is negative?
We write those on every note.
But we get most of them, I mean, so we try to-
We do, yeah, our, our staff does a great job, you know, it's the office staff and Bill. Uh, they do a great job.
Cause some schools have, I don't know if it's been on the news or in MSBA, and there's schools that had tens of thousands of dollars
We've never been there.
in school lunches that were negative, and so, we don't have that problem, but-
Yes, some do.
Some do, so we're lucky in that respect.
But we have a board named, we had this discussion that we would not let kids be hungry.
Yes.
No, we're, no, that's not happening.
Yes, so they get a regular meal, it's not just a sandwich, they get a full meal.
So, now we're looking at Community Ed.
Most of them.
And you can see the revenue there, almost hundred ninety thousand, and the expense is hundred eighty-seven, so positive there, also three thousand dollars.
We write the black. We are in, that is great news, you guys, everybody, that's a good thing to see.
Yeah, we did end FY seventeen, so the last school year, not the one that just finished, the prior one, positive fund balance. Um, we do support Co-County Youth Agency Coalition, that's the kayak, you've heard that mentioned? That's our daycare, our after-school All-Stars, um, those are the big pieces there, kids camp.
ECFE.
Our Community Ed is our preschool program, ECFE, youth athletics, Tribers Ed. Those are the big items that we really do things with, our Community Ed. And Bill DeWitt's got a great job with our preschool, you know, getting that fired up, we're actually looking at some other things this year too, so. Preschool's really taken off.
I have a question. Community Ed is funding a lot of stuff that's going on through the kid, through the YMCA.
That's, that's a joint venture.
Right. Now, what is the liability issue for this school? I mean, this was something, the community again, um, when, like, the YMCA had some childcare issues, some serious situations. And what is the school's liability? I mean, we are tied to that program financially.
Financially. The employees are not our employees, they are the Y employees, so if something happened at the employee level, they're actually the Y's employees. The liability.
But do we have some say or something? I mean, I do, if you get a really good lawyer, I believe, will go after anybody.
Well, they, they definitely will, I'm looking, Sissy, we, we had our meeting today, so we have a user, uh, our agreement on how we work. And part of that, when you talk about employees, is that we need to work together, communicate together, you know, we went through all the requirements, you know, background checks and training and such. Um, one of the pieces that we didn't do a great job on this year, but we know we need to change that, is communication. So, the Y is hiring employees for their daycare, for their after-school All-Star program, kids camp, um, they need to talk to us as well. And so, say, for example, we release an employee or an employee resigns, and we kind of go, well, we're not gonna hire, you know, John Doe or Jane Doe back. And then, the next thing we know, they're coming in our building, you know, what the heck is going on? Oh, they work for the Y. Oh, oh, you know, so that's, that communication is now real evident that that needs to happen. The main focus is gonna be, you know, with Mr. DeWitt because, I mean, he, he runs our school, and he knows all the employees. So, uh, in the future, anytime they're looking through even applicants, they're gonna connect with Dr. DeWitt and say, hey, these are who we're looking at, um, you know, interview them. And he may just say, uh, candidate number three, you need to take off your list. So, so that's the piece. The liability though, um, yeah, we, we're in joint venture with them, so it's the Y and the school district. For any, if it's something happened at kids camp or daycare or after-school.
Or toddler drowning.
If it's happening, yeah.
So, so, so we-
If they're in one of our programs, then we're involved.
I feel a little powerless. I mean, we're on the hook, but yet, we can't, we have to trust the oversight of YMCA supervision that, that-
But that's part of the Y's that we staff today.
Okay, so, a kayak, so, a kayak, so that's the programs that we do, Community Ed.
Yeah, that's the Co-County Youth Coalition.
Yes, so, those employee, so, we will have a say in those hires, and we have a say, and, um, you know, Emily does do direct supervision of it, but, because she's there and the person's there all the time, but it does fall under that agreement, and so, that, so if there's things, there's conversations that are happening, I guess I wanna, like, assure you that it's not like they have free rein. There's not free rein.
One example I can use, uh, Dr. DeWitt, I think, was it last year or was it even this year, uh, when he did an observation on some of the employees? I check in at least minimum once a month. When I'm up here, I do a walk-through of our daycare facility, just to see how things are going.
They use our behavior guidelines, they use our behavior guidelines, and, um, if there's a problem with a child and they need to maybe exit the program, we have, there's criteria that's followed. And so, there's, there's policies and procedures that have been implemented that we agree with, that have been reviewed and have gotten our stamp of approval, so to speak. Um, so, there is oversight. You know, we can do, do more, and we talked about a few things today, but that's why we have this Y sec group, we meet monthly. And so, um, there's definitely, we wanna make sure we've got good communication because it's a cooperative program.
Yep.
And we finance it, so we have our finance person, Lori attends, and we also have, from the Y, from Duluth, also attends these meetings to keep track of finances. So, I wanna assure you that we definitely, um, you know, are very involved. We participate and we're involved in that, so, yeah.
That's one of the reasons why you saw Sissy cheer when she saw that, because in the past, I remember that was one of the first glaring things, I was, when I was not your superintendent and you guys were going through, and I saw it, and I went, that's odd, why are we supporting this program at a cost of thirty thousand dollars? And that was one of the first things Lori and I talked about, and then Lori, myself, and Emily talked, and we said, this has, this has to be fixed. We can't operate a budget.
Run in a deficit.
We can't operate a program on deficit. It's just not sustainable.
Yeah.
And so, she, along with Lori and I, and actually, I think that's when they, that's when we started having both of the finance peoples sitting at the table going, you know, we need to create a budget that is sustainable and not a deficit to either of the organizations. And so, that is huge for the last two years, because it went down last year and then this year as well.
And this is the first time Community Ed's been in the black since I've been the business manager.
I know, I was gonna say, I've never seen it in the black ever.
So, last year, so last year, when we got that award, the finance award from MDE, that's the biggest reason why we had not gotten it in the past. I think it was when Cindy was the business manager, was one of the last times we had it. In, in not related to who your business manager is, but where we were spending our money and how we were supporting programs and preschool, and we started doing a lot more for youth in the last few years, so.
Now, we have another individual who makes sure that they pay, that Pam is paying up. She's on top of it.
Yes.
She holds it, the nice thing for drivers, that she holds the blue card.
Yeah.
You will not get your permit unless Pam shows me the money.
First time.
Ooh.
Yeah, so, she does a great job too, collecting, making sure all the fees for, um, it's mentioned in here for, obviously, for the preschool, she does, I remember one of the first things, that was one of the first things we looked at, and we looked, catching, I don't know, a couple of thousand dollars, you know, through diligence by Pam.
Because Pam, as a reminder, Pam holds the role of the Community Ed assistant.
Assistant.
Okay, so she's got a, a dual role, you know, she, so just as a reminder, I don't, if Carrie and Dan, I don't know if you know that, but.
Willa?
Yep. And so, fund balance, same goals, and so, what we're putting in here is obviously some of the information we're looking at, um, it might be next slide, but. Our one, three, and five, general fund, unassigned balance for at the end, FY seventeen, so last school year, we are at six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, which represents just over ten percent. Alright, so the total general fund balance, as you can see, is the seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, includes some funds for the signed severance and unspendables such as the food or propane, those types of things. Alright? The fund balance, a goal at the end of this year is unassigned fifteen percent of the operating expenses, so just over a million dollars.
Under.
Or, excuse me, under, yeah. Expectations are that we're gonna be meeting that goal. As I mentioned earlier, um, this is the big payout month, you know, we're just running the payroll right now, I can tell we, Lori. And so, we have that, this is a big payroll right now, and then, of course, the end of the month. Fund balance goal at the end of FY nineteen, the proposed budget, is to get to our seventeen, okay, with the operating expenses, which equals approximately one point two million. And we expect to get there.
And actually, that's how it's worded in the policy?
Yeah.
But it, the approximation's under a million, and we've reduced our spending a little bit, so fifteen percent, seventeen percent are actually under those numbers a little more, so because, because they're, they're fluid, based on what our expenditures are this year, will give us what the target number is at the end of this year.
But there's-
It's a percentage, yeah.
But the, the piece there for that total, you're gonna see a total general fund balance, that's not what the fund balance goal is based off of, that's another point that we want to stress there as well.
Yes, when I started looking into this a little deeper, that it's that unassigned is the word that's used, and I think when Tim presented it to the board, he used the seven thirty-four number, which assumes, which includes some assigned.
Okay.
So, so when Tim-
Uh, Tim was the auditor.
The, um, whip plate, yeah.
The auditor, yeah. When, so when he presented that last year, he was using the seven thirty-four, and we start looking into it, it's, when you look at the unassigned number, it was the six eighty-six. Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted you guys to know that.
No, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
So, we are on track for our fund balance goals. Current proposals include the estimate for our new staff, um, not yet hired, and benefit to see no family versus zero, for example. So, we usually, we're pretty conservative when we hire. We think we're, we estimate the cost of a hire, the masters and the family, just in case. Current Fund One, uh, to date, numbers include grants and gifts that aren't budgeted, you know, both on revenue and expense side. Remember, those kinds are a wash, you know, we get three thousand dollar grant or something, well, we're gonna spend it on whatever that happens to be, and then it just goes right through. The bond funds are enabling Fund Five goals to save, and you saw that on the capital. And then, expect to bring a revised version approximately twice a year, uh, like we've been doing, and, you know, we're gonna have those solid numbers as they become available. We have a couple of staff still out there, what is it, Erlich, Alvin, Special Ed.
Speech.
Uh, they're hoping to find a speech person, and we also have OTPT.
Oh, occupational therapy.
Occupational therapist, physical therapy. So, we have been working with, was it the clinic or the hospital?
I was paying North Shore Health.
North Shore Health, who have gotten too busy, is what, their schedules have gotten too full, and they can't get that sent, so we need to find, find some. So, we do have, uh, and this is what we have been doing, we do a mid-year revision in the fall after any additional hires and benefits, so we can basically clean it up knowing exactly, you know, relating to much more solid numbers. And then, we review the fund balance, uh, policy, at a future meeting, we'll be doing that, when we get our final numbers from FY eighteen. Really, we'll have that, you know, following the audit, so we'll have it, yeah.
So, does the fund bal, so let's say we meet our fund balance goal that's in the policy, is that like, how the, how, what allows us to spend that money then? Like, realize it's for, you know, it's in case we need it, but how would, does that, is there a certain like classification of things that would justify it?
It's the, the board can decide to do-
So, the board, yeah, the board can change it, so what we try to do is, cause, cause when I started, it was kind of, it was defined as days. Like, you had so many days, like, you needed to have sixteen, I don't remember, a hundred and twenty days or whatever it was, and so, we decided to opt for a percentage, just, um, and it just made more sense, and so, as a board, we just decided, you know, several people, you know, not everybody was on the board at that time, and we decided as a board, that seemed like a good amount of money to have in the bank, so to speak. And so, a future board may decide to make that even higher, or there may be a board that will lower it, cause unfortunately, I also was on the board when we had to drop it. And we had to drop it, and drop it, and drop it, and drop it, and so, but there, you get into, you get into a thing where you don't even know if you're gonna make payroll. And, you know, there, it's called statutory operating debt, and you don't wanna do that, cause the state could come in and take over your district, and so, part of the reason why we have this is to make sure that we're-
Not negative.
Not negative, but, you know, we're living within our means, so to speak, and having a good budget, just like at your, at home, you know, you got a budget, you gotta live within your means, and so. And so, that's kind of my take on it, I mean, I don't know, the board members-
And it's like if all of a sudden the roof blows up, or, or, or something-
Some horrible, something horrible happens.
Or something's not working in the school, and we need to hire somebody. You guys, when you approve changes, we come to you and we say, we wanna do this, and you guys approve something, that drives a change for me to go back and key something in the budget, you know, and make a revision.
You know, but something could happen, I mean, a big building, something could happen and cost a lot of money that we don't have during the course-
I can give you an example, um, right down the road, in the nineteen eighties, or nineteen eighty-six or something, the mine closed. All of a sudden, their graduating class went from a hundred and fifty to, it, it cut in half. And so, all of a sudden, you had, you know, seventy-five, eighty kids, if not a hundred, were now out of your system. All that revenue is no longer there, but at the same time, you have all the staff and big, big facilities. And so, drastic reductions were needed to be made. But what can soften your blow, for us, we've got four, three years left? Is this, are we going into our second year? Yeah. Okay, so say for, when, when this particular operating referendum expires, if we do not get an extension, we, we're gonna have a little savings, and if we say, well, we as a board at that time want to maintain our small class size, well, in order to maintain our small class size, we're gonna need to
dip into it.
spend some of our thing, but at the same time, we're gonna need to be, you know, really planning forward as, how can we sustain this, what are we gonna have to do? And unfortunately, school districts, it's people, I mean, that's where all our money really is, is in people.
Which just been, we have to have data to show that this small class size is-
Right, I mean, yeah, it just, it's that example.
I mean, that's what we got to keep generating and working towards.
Any other questions? Very, very good news.
Very good.
Very great, so great news, but-
Yeah, and actually, we're, and we're- A lot of it is in thanks to our community and their support with our operating referendum, obviously, our bond, so. A lot of the real positive situation that we're in is due to our community.
Board members have any other questions or any clarifications? Board members have any other questions or any clarifications they need on anything? Obviously, we're gonna continue to talk about this, but, um.
Do we have, did anyone make a motion on this?
Yes. Do you wanna flip on the lights?
Oh, we, oh, fine.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, we are.
We're good? Okay. So, any other questions, comments? Anyways, then we have Kettle moved, um, second by Shirley to approve the FY twenty nineteen budget. Nothing else, okay? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, nine point six to approve the ARC contract for FY twenty eighteen and nineteen.
Make a motion to approve the contract?
I can second.
Okay, discussion.
Oh, you said, like, that the board members had an opportunity, um, Pam included both last year's and this year's, so you could see the comparison really. Um, when I looked at it, the changes were a quarter in two spots, so a total of fifty cents per pupil, which for us is in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty dollars increase. And they are, they're a great service.
Any other questions? No, no questions, okay. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, nine point seven to approve renewal of membership to the Minnesota State High School League for twenty eighteen, nineteen.
I believe in this as well as, okay, so this is our membership, uh, if I ever recall, I think we have to assign with board member two?
We, we didn't last, we didn't last year, we were going to, and I don't know that that took place.
Um, I.
Yeah, it seems like there's supposed to be a representative from the board and then the school.
We were, it was supposed to be discussion on a later date.
Yeah, so what would happen, what, what your role would be is if something happened in a Minnesota State High School League event, or not, at an event? Or there's some kind, let's say for, some kind of a violation, and it had to come, you would be the board member that would be representing us and looking over it. And then bring it to the entire board if it's something at that level. So for example, um, at a sporting event, typically what would come to you would be a misconduct. You know, someone got ejected from a game. That would be the type of, uh, item that would come to your attention. You'd get the email from our activities director that, you know, whatever John Doe, Jane Doe, did such and such at this activity or event. And was suspended, will be, is, whether suspended for the next two events. That type of scenario.
So it's never happened.
As the rep.
It's never, this has never happened, the whole time I've been on the board. Does somebody wanna volunteer for this? Um, you designate the board chair to do it?
I would recommend either the two board members that are still gonna be here for the full year next year.
Yeah.
Us three may not be here.
Right after reelections.
Hopefully, yes, you are, that's later, that's the next thing, that's the next.
Oh, that was the question.
So I would recommend.
Or a couple.
Miss Jansen.
One of you two should be the representative.
Yeah, um, and like I said.
I would love to do it, but.
It's never happened, and so it's, if, if you wanna, if you wanna do it, or if you're not interested, um.
What does it entail again, I'm sorry, like, no, it's probably on family.
Well, if, did you, do you have a chance to read? If, um, basically, if there was, uh, somebody, a dispute, if it was a dispute, it's, it's not, to me, it's like you're the, the kind of a jury.
You're, you're part of what's called, if you, on here, it's called the local advisory committee. Each school is urged to form an advisory committee for league activities. Community membership is not limited to, but shall include a school board member, student, parent, faculty member to advise designated school representatives on all matters relating to the school's membership in the state high school. So that's one piece. What the example I gave was, if something happened in, in an athletic or anything associated with an associate high school league.
Yeah.
Any kind of an event, someone did something, and we get notification that you would be on that board. So say, for example, you know, it would be most likely Dr. Dwyitt, myself, and this, Mitch Door is the activities director, board member. If we have a, a student and a parent rep, we would get together and say, okay, this is what happened. Here's the list of consequences, where should we, where should this particular individual fall as far as what's appropriate for this situation?
Do you want to designate or not?
It doesn't make a difference, I guess, I don't have a strong preference, but I.
Yeah, just so you know, the, the other folks, what, the other representatives will be, there'll be something from boys' sports, girls' sports, music, speech, um, the board member. Uh, we'll have a student, faculty member, and we work together, a, a parent.
Okay, all right, so board member Jansen will be the designee.
Unless you want to.
No. I got a girl that's in that, so you kids are still young, so that's very best.
There's not the conflict of interest there.
So, and it's probably good, probably than I'm not, so. Um, all right, but we do need, uh, a motion to approve the renewal of the membership. And then we can designate board member Jansen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, nine point eight, QCOM annual report.
Dr. Dwyitt is gonna present that to the board. Uh, and it's in your packet if you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Grandle and board members, uh, just to point out, um, I, I put in italics the word preliminary, this, this is the preliminary data report. The state typically public, uh, publicizes the final data sometime in the middle of the summer. And so when you look through the last couple pages, where there's a grid, it'll say state, and then it'll just say not known or something like that, cause we don't know what they're gonna get. And they also verify our own data, so, you know, we've added the numbers up and looked at them, and I could've made a mistake. So that's, that's just out there for the board to know. Uh, for QCOM, that stands for quality compensation, and that is a program that we are lucky enough to be part of. Um, provides for teacher leadership, um, the ability to have PLCs operating in a building. Teachers can go into each other's classrooms and observe each other, give each other coaching and feedback, advice, they can set goals and go after them, and helps improve your school. Uh, the nice thing about QCOM now is that it, uh, meets the requirements of the teacher evaluation law. And so we were just at a conference, Dr. Grandle, Mr. Door, myself, talking about how different schools are implementing this, and some schools have to do what we're doing without any additional funding at all. Um, so we're very lucky to be part of this. Um, so each year, we provide you a report, um, with our recommendations that the quality oversight committee has come up with, um, to continue to improve the school. Uh, the core components here, you can see listed, the first part was career advancement options, and that has helped, we're gonna make one change. Uh, teachers step up and do leadership positions, and one of those changes is the mentor coordinator position. So this is the person that coordinates which teacher is gonna help the new teachers that are in staff, and how you're gonna help them learn how to use your keys, how to go on the computer and stuff. And we're gonna be more specific in telling that mentor, mentor coordinator, uh, the job descriptions and, and how often to meet with the mentors, the mentees, to make sure every little detail's covered. So we, we feel we have a few holes in that, people kind of forgot different things to do, or weren't sure where to log in and do some things, so we can improve that. Uh, job embedded professional development, that's the PLCs, these are meetings, their PLC stands for professional learning communities. We felt this went very good this year, we organized by curriculum areas with some changes in the middle of the year. Um, but it did, we did very good, uh, they worked on mapping the standards, making learning targets and assessments, and we're gonna continue with this model for next year because it was successful. Uh, teacher evaluation is one of the components as well, and, uh, our teachers get evaluated quite a bit. So they get evaluated twice by a peer teacher, and that includes a pre, an evaluation, a post-coaching session. You get evaluated three times by administration, myself or Mr. Door. And then what's not listed on here is they get evaluated an additional three times by administration. That is not part of the quality compensation package for our own administrative evaluations. So they get, a new teacher would get evaluated up to eight times a year. And we do our best to get those done in the first part of the year, so you can set expectations, help folks improve and things like that. Um, next year, what we wanna do is streamline it a little bit, so we can reduce the amount of time put into the pre-evaluation, and put more time into the post-evaluation. And so we wanna make sure we're seeing authentic teaching, and we can give authentic feedback, and so we don't wanna put as much weight on giving us a really pretty form, like what you're gonna do in this fancy lesson, and more, let's see what you're doing and help you on that. Um, and the last part here is performance pay. Um, there's three areas, one of them is a school-wide goal for the entire district. One of them is the teacher's individual goal, we call their SMART goal, and then one of them is evaluations and things. Uh, nobody met the school-wide goal across the school, that's based on having your kids meet a certain percentage score on the Minnesota comprehensive assessment test. No one made that goal. Um, ninety-six percent of teachers met their individual SMART goals, and these are goals that teachers set based on their curriculum. So the FIAID teacher will have a FIAID goal, and the math teacher will have a math goal and stuff, um, but it's approved by the quality oversight committee to make sure it's a legitimate goal. And then, um, a hundred percent of teachers met the standard to earn the bonus and the pay for their observations, as well as to move on the salary schedule. So one thing that, um, districts across the state that are not part of quality compensation, um, do not have to do is have a requirement to move down that little matrix for pay. And so you have to meet these criteria to get that next step in pay here and other districts, it's just, you've been with us, keep going down. So that's part of it as well. Um, we're gonna follow, we wanna follow the lead of other districts in that we don't want, um, our focus is on kids and achievement in all areas. It's not on just getting the kids to pass the test, and we don't wanna reward our teachers for just getting the kids to pass the test. We want the, the amount of money to be reflected on their actual performance in the classroom. So we're gonna move ninety-nine dollars out of the hundred dollar bonus for that test, and put it directly on the teacher evaluations next year. So we're gonna adopt a goal of one dollar for meeting our school-wide comprehensive assessment test goal, and that's what some other districts have done across the state. Kind of sends a message that, um, you know, parents, no, we're, we're not making your kid go through eight hours of testing in spring just so we get a hundred dollars. We get a buck for it, we're not, we're here to be a good teacher into what we're doing, so. That's our recommendation, it's been a great program, um, we think we're doing a good job with it. Um, along with that, so we talked about not many school-wide goals and percentages. So the next part of the, the sheet there for you is preliminary MCA data. And one thing to be aware of, when we talk percentages in our school, it's, we're a small school, and so if you look at the percentages, um, one percent, you know, on average, each school had a different number of kids. One percent's about two kids. So if you look, and we made it, you know, a two percent decrease or two percent increase, that's four kids, you know, passing or not passing a test. So, uh, in math, uh, for the high school, math, uh, went up by eight percent, so that sixteen kids got better at math. Uh, dropped by five or six percent, so that's twelve kids dropped in reading, we're not sure what state averages is. When you go down beneath that, you look at the high school Native American proficiency percents, and we all want to make sure, looking at this and working with, uh, the Graham Porter Education staff and supporting our Native American kids. We've done, uh, very poorly in supporting them in terms of passing this test in the last two years in math. Reading this past year, they made a jump of, you know, thirty-some percent, so that was huge. Uh, one thing I do want the board to know is that the Graham Porter Education Department, Ms. Maria Burnett, Burnett has worked, been working very hard to get the math tutor back. So they had a math tutor in place, um, and then due to family concerns, the first now to step back, they're hoping to have one next year, and I think that'll help.
Just for clarification, the math test is done only for grade eleven students. And so the percentage points are actually two, two percentage points per child.
Oh, good point, yeah.
At the high school.
Yeah.
And probably the middle school as well. And then for reading, um, what's the same situation as far as that?
Yeah, so actually, it might, I'm glad I said preliminary, so that might actually be two kids.
The whole school, if you look at Cook County Schools, that's all of them.
Yeah.
Uh, the reading test is at grade ten, is when they take that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that actually is, that threw my numbers way off, I didn't even catch that. So we're doing, doing pretty good in terms of the swings then. Um, when you look at the middle school, uh, middle school math dropped seven percent there, and that is tested at all the grade levels, so that would be reflective of, of the numbers. And then, uh, the reading went up by seven percent. Again, we had a large concern with the drop in the Native American proficiency percents, down to eleven percent in math. Um, they increased by twenty-eight percent in reading, or that's, uh, twenty-four percent from last year, so there's good progress there.
You can see last year's, they, math and reading, so we still have, uh, or direction on the kitchen.
Yeah. Um, and then we look at the elementary, the elementary went up, um, by about eight students in math this year to forty-eight percent. Uh, dropped by four students in reading at sixty-seven percent. Math, uh, countywide, has, is this, math is low countywide. Uh, reading, this is, last year is the highest score countywide in the past eight years, this is probably the second highest score in eight years, so it's fairly consistent, reading at the elementary. Um, Native American proficiency, proficiency percents increased, they're still low. Um, I do wanna point out the Native American proficiency percents in the elementary school at sixty percent is very close to the sixty-seven percent overall. And so, you know, people talk about an achievement gap, and I think they're doing a very good job in reducing that, and it's thanks to the help of the Graham Porter Education Department and our teachers, so we're getting close. Um, just a couple of numbers in the bottom of your report, talk about maps. And so this year, uh, grades that didn't take the MCA test, so when Dr. Grandle talked about various grades in the high school, or kindergarten through second graders, they take a math test to kind of measure where they're at, to make sure we're checking students' growth. And there's a lot of promising results there. Kindergarten through second grade is at sixty-nine percent for math and seventy percent for reading. And Native American proficiency in math is at sixty-three percent, K through two, and so we're getting very, very, very close to getting those, that gap eliminated. Um, and then you can see the, the positive results in the ninth grade maps and math and reading, and the tenth grade results in math as well. So there's, there's some good results happening, but there's also some big levels of concern. And so I did a re, recommendation report for the board, um, our weakest area obviously is the mathematics. Um, we, we increased a little bit in high school and elementary, but we're still significantly lower than the reading. And in the middle school, twenty-seven percent of kids passing a state examination is a huge flag. Um, there's some positives with reading increase in middle school, and it's staying high in the elementary. Um, high school mathematics made a good jump, and we talked about the achievement gap being narrowed in certain areas. Um, so what I'd recommend, um, is to continue to do what we're doing as a board, you're supporting our recommendations for curriculum investment, training stu, uh, staff and students. Uh, next year, we're bringing in a gentleman by the name of Russ Davidson to help us in a new curriculum mapping process and designing, uh, common assessments throughout the grade levels and mathematics. Um, working with Lake Superior School District, they're setting up a refresher training with Orton Gillingham, we're picking up, piggybacking off on that, which helps our reading, to keep us the best we can at reading. Um, appreciate the board's support and the community support in small class sizes, cause we can't do it without the referendum or the bond. Um, you know, a, a short example, that one of the areas in the elementary school that had one of the lowest scores this year occurred in that, uh, grade five group that we invested in, yeah, I think back in January, February. Just, it was, it was big, it was a large class size, we, we got it finally through, we got another teacher in for part-time to try to help, uh, they still didn't do quite as well as we expected. Um, and next year, we're, we're bringing on another fifth grade teacher early on, so we're ready to go and keep a small class size. And that's huge, keeping a small, calm environment, um, that you can focus on kids will help us a lot, and we, we saw a decrease there. And then helping us focus on our continued core mission to teach the state standards, um, we do a great job of that. One thing I've noticed being here for a couple of years is that we have an incredibly supportive community of our, in our school. But, you know, sometimes we can get a little distracted, and our job is to educate students, and we appreciate the board's support, and we'll do the best we can as administrators to help support the teachers and just focusing on teaching. And sometimes there's some noise out there, let's keep doing our job. But I think we got a lot of good areas to focus on, and some we did good on, and some not. I'm ready for questions.
So, our fifth graders, they have been the recipients of the, they had small class sizes their entire careers here, right?
No, no. Our fifth grade group, uh, was in one group last year, and I'm not sure the year before that.
K through two.
K through two, K through two has small class sizes.
They were the small ones.
And then we've had some.
Cause it's been.
Bigger ones.
How big, it's been by what?
Currently, they're at thirty-two. Yeah, it didn't start that way, so it wasn't a decision to start at thirty-two, but it's always, it's a balancing act, it's hard. You look at the group, how they're doing, you know, where they're at, and, and just like looking at the budget, what can we afford, and, and so that particular group, I believe, started at twenty-six or twenty-seven this year. You know, they, they did good in reading last year, there's a little concerns in math, and then all of a sudden, move it, move it, move it.
They all have a, move the fifth grader, oh.
Yup, and you get some high needs moving in or something, or, you know, yeah. But so next year, in terms of the small class sizes, next year, um, K one, two, three, and five will have two sections each. And the one that is not two sections, it's gonna be a fourth grade next year, there are twenty-five students. I've got no concerns though with their. I've got no concerns, though, with their performance right now and how their classroom's functioning, so.
One of the best groups in the entire school.
They're all great, they're all great groups, you know, but it's how you, yeah, classroom dynamics.
No, and I'm glad, because I'm glad to see that you've got written is to make sure we're teaching all standards and curriculum areas are being taught and measured. So, that's one of the things when we had the data presentation for math that I did bring up, you know, that we talked about is we're, even though we don't like it, the state, we, our kids ought to take that state test. And that is how we're ranked and rated, and that's, that's how the public sees us. And so, we have to make sure that we're teaching those standards. And so, like you said, it's not always fun, maybe? And there's a lot of other things. So, I do appreciate you saying that. It is state law. No, and I, but I appreciate it because I do feel like sometimes it's not fun to teach those standards. And so, I do appreciate that. And I am on the QOC, the Quality Oversight Committee, and this is the first, I have not served on that before. This is my first round since last fall. And it's, it's a great group of people. It's administration, Dr. Crandall, principal, and then, but the majority of the group is made up of teachers because it's a teacher-led program. And so, I just want to say it's a great committee. QCOM is a great program. And if you have any specific questions, I don't care if you're familiar with it, but if you have any specific questions, please ask Dr. DeWitt. It's good. It was good. And I've learned a lot being on that. I know, Chris, you've served on that before, too. It's an interesting committee to be a part of. Enjoyed it.
So, one of the things that jumps out to me on, just looking at the Native American population stats here, it's very inconsistent, you know. It's not like, you know, you kind of talked about, well, we went up from this to this this year. But, you know, if you look back at the data we have, it's like, it's kind of all over the map. You know, and so, that's, I realize that the population is small, so every student has a huge impact on the percentages. And it could just be a matter of you only have so many people per grade, and that really affects it.
It has to be focused on individual students and, and, so we do this because that's what you do, show percentages. But, but the bottom line is, it's the individual student and getting the support of the student and the tutor and making sure that you're helping.
I mean, is there, you know, class size is obviously one of the pieces of the puzzle in terms of achievement here that seems like we're focusing on. I don't know, do you, you guys have a sense for, for those kids up in Grand Portage? Like, is that, you know, the main thing, the kind of support that they need? Or is there like a different thing that would be more beneficial, you know, for them?
You look at research and it's, honestly, it's not based on, we talk Grand Portage or Native American or, or if you're in the cities, working with other, other groups of cultures, it's not based on that. It's the biggest impact you can have on a student, to be honest with you, class size helps your environment. But achievement impact is based on the teacher relationship with the student. Well, having, you know, aligned curriculum to the standards and assessing it, having a student in our classroom, being able to have formative assessments the entire time you're teaching to see if they got it and having interventions to follow up are the ones that do it. So, you could, we talk class sizes, they're huge for environments to set up the support for learning. But I've seen teachers have groups of thirty-two kids that we just talked about and bring them all along and have relationships there and the support there. In our system, to be honest, I think probably one of the biggest barriers to our, our success with some of the students is the amount of time we see the kid. And that's not just like in Grand Portage, that's folks down in the Gunflint Trail, folks in town, folks in Tocky, folks in Luton, anywhere. There are students in our school that have been in our school, let's say, since kindergarten, and now they're in fifth grade, or now they're in eighth grade. And so, that, that means they should be in our school for five or six years. They, in reality, have attended our school for four years. When you add up the amounts of absences and things like that. And that's due to a large number of reasons, whether it's the distance, you know, if it's money, if it's sickness, if it's, who knows what, but that's a big factor.
Just being present.
Yeah. Being present, and I, to be honest with you, I can't prove it, but you know, when I looked at math, it's the same in every single school in the county in terms of that lower percentage. And math is an area that is very, like, you have to get that lesson to get the next lesson. And reading, reading is kind of the same, but you, at a certain point, you kind of, you go off on it and you can keep going. And so, that could be a big reason that the schools in general across the county are kind of in that lower areas, getting kids in school. In July, when we talked about the handbooks, the attendance policy we bring into you guys, we've developed with, in consultation with Great Expectations School, Pete James. We had a meeting about a year ago with the county Health and Human Services, Grand Portage, about this kind of issue, because everybody's kind of seeing it. So, we all want to do the kind of the same thing to help support that. But I think there are, so that's one piece, but there are things we can keep improving, right? As a teacher myself, I taught fourth grade, and I don't think I really knew my standards for two or three years. You know, what, or you know the standard, and you're, as an example, you know, this little sheet of paper is area. So, you take this side times this side gives you the area, and that says, that's, that's the standard for fourth grade. But it takes you a couple of years to realize that you gotta teach them if the room goes up this way and it goes this way. And those little tricks on doing more complex area because it's not listed exactly according to standards. So, there's ways that every teacher, every system can improve.
And actually, the person that we have coming to train is also gonna make sure that if you teach second grade, that you're teaching second grade standards, or if you're teaching third grade. One of the examples, we have teachers, "I love doing this project," or it may have been a project or it might have been this particular area in math. You teach second grade, that's a third grade standard. You need to teach the second, but I love it. You need to teach the second grade standards, not the third grade standards, the second grade standards. Because if you don't, when they get to third grade, they don't have that standard. And now, you've just created a hole.
Yeah.
It's hard. We used to, we used to have.
There's some great things that our teachers are gonna get from this training, yeah.
And as Bill DeWitt's saying, if, you know, in those early years, you miss the week that you really focused on learning multiplication. And then, you're, you're still struggling on multiplication as a tenth grader, even though you, the area you were sick or had mono or whatever it was happen to be in second grade. It never goes away because you haven't been re-taught as much as, because that was the time, that was the key moment, you missed it.
A lot of schools are getting into that now. You drive up and down, if you ever take a trip down to the Luther, Twin Cities, they have billboards up all over the place now, and they say, you know, two absences, absences a month equals, you know, decreased, so.
I'm also very excited about your idea of focusing on the teacher evaluations more so than the arbitrary math goal. I remember that being something I felt it was hard to make authentic occasionally if you're not a math teacher. And it seems like you're looking at the big picture by focusing on, you know, what are we doing as teachers and how are we meeting our goals? On the big picture and the small picture might take care of itself a little bit more, I hope. So, I think that's a really positive initiative.
And I would hope that, you know, because we do have several, I don't know several. We do have instances where there's parents that opt out of these tests because it's just too much pressure for their child. And unfortunately, as, just a reminder for all of us, that counts against us. That counts as they're not proficient. And so, you know, maybe it's more, you know, I would hope that, you know, we can be a little bit, we can make sure that we, parents are aware of it, not to put more pressure, but, you know, I don't know if there's a way to soften that or something, but it is unfortunate that we're penalized for that parent's choice.
We have to put that in the handbook now, that that's your option as a parent, so it's more and more.
Put on the handbook, put on your website.
Yeah.
So, like last year, we had two, two students, I think, two or three students last year opted out of the test. This year, we had seven or eight opt out. There's a school in the Twin Cities, I don't know if we said it to them, somebody got a movement started. Every single parent opted out of the test. And so, they had zero percent of their kids pass, you know.
So, it's kind of, it's sort of like a political thing.
Yeah, that's what it turns out to be. Yeah, but they can't opt out of our, teachers love tests, I love tests. I give quizzes every week in my class and I'm the teacher, so they can't opt out of that. So, we can still test the kids and see where they're at.
More that, as Bill mentioned earlier, the form of assessment, and that really is what counts. That's really tells, gives the teacher the feedback, or the kids learning the concept of that particular week or two week period.
We have a great class, make a nice class, get the credits, graduate.
Well, if that, I mean, if the lower scores translates into some sort of like ultimate disadvantage for the student because we like don't get the funding or something happens, you know, I think it's fair to communicate that as well. You know, like, okay, you can opt out, but if we, I don't know, maybe this isn't the case, but if it were, we ought to communicate it, like, if we fall below the standard, then like, you know, your child isn't gonna get, you know, we're, we're gonna all lose out on these resources, so, you know. Because being fully informed on your decision is a good idea, you know what I mean?
It used to be there, it used to be a requirement, and that's kind of gone now for the last.
Yeah, they used to have the graduation requirement on the school side.
They had to graduate to pass it, yeah.
What they're looking at doing, though, at the high school level for the grade ten, grade eleven test, the math and reading, is to correlate the score some way, shape, or form with the ACUPLACER. The ACUPLACER is the test that, or assessment that students take in order to get into the, you know, like the Hibbin Community College, Lakeside Bureau College and such. And so, if you have a, they're gonna have some kind of a cut score. You hit this point, you're college-ready for math, you're college-ready for reading. And so, they're hoping to really get that established. And so, in the future, you take that, and you're, you know, you can, basically, we're gonna be telling our kids, you do well, well enough, you don't have to take the ACUPLACER. Well, check, one less test you have to, or assessment. So, that's nice for that, the younger.
So, this report has to be submitted to the state?
Yes.
And so.
We have to make sure we brief the board on it.
Yes, so it has to be presented to the board, and then.
It'll be in our minutes, and that's.
Has to go to the state for, I don't know, for them to look, I don't necessarily want to say they approve it. Is it an approval?
It's just that we did the report.
The approvals of our plan, the plan that we, so. McQuox in agreement on the plan and.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right, nine point nine, the athletic annual report.
All right, so this is Pam Taylor submitted this for us, her last one. She has some highlights in here, the hundred and forty-six students participated, and that's grade seven through twelve volleyball. Went back to state, and a lot of these things you probably know for the third year. Two female skiers made it to the state, and then, one male advanced in track that was mentioned tonight. We also had two coaches recognized, one of them April Wallstrom as the section coach of the year. And then, Pam Taylor herself was section and coach of the year for volleyball. Do we have, we have football coach next year? It wasn't mentioned in here.
We approved.
We approved that. And then, we also have our volleyball coach next year as well, Marlene Wester. Basketball, Colin Iverson will be our coach next year. Basketball, kind of a low light, a bit, they were a little worried about numbers, so we hoped to build a program there. They both had lower numbers there. Once again, Alpine skiing, we have the two young ladies, and a big thank you to Luton Mountains for all the support they do for our Alpine club. Nordic skiing and our cross-country running with our, with the Running and Ski Club. They really support our, the two programs there. And Nordic skiing, I just came back, but, you know, they felt that they're moving in the right direction there. Softball, do we have a new softball coach yet?
Not yet. He's got a promising lead.
All right, yeah, Mr. Lukin moving on, they're across the ocean, actually. And then, started off slow there for baseball, but they finished the season there with a six-eight-one record. And then, a little summary from Pam, where she feels that, you know, all of our programs have a big effect, a large effect on our students. Lots of, you know, in our, in our kids, any kid in any one of our programs, there's a big commitment. Because of our geography, some of their children just, you know, on a daily basis are traveling large distances just for practice. And then, when it comes to game time, you know, they're getting home, as Cecile alluded to earlier when we were talking about lights, they're getting in after midnight, and then have to turn around and be here, you know, at seven, eight in the morning, or jump on the bus, who knows when.
Can I have a question?
Oh, yeah.
And I know I asked, but I just never feel like I, under track. It says this pays for transportation. Any left goes to the North Shore Ski and Run Club. What does that mean? What do you mean anything left? We don't pay them any money back.
So, so I take all the revenue that we got from all the athletes and divvy it up by what sport gets what. I never really cut them a check, but it covers what they should owe us. And then, I go up and see whether there's a bill that, I don't think our agreement says that we give them any money.
No, it would reduce the bill. Because at the end, we submit.
What she meant, what?
Because skiing and run, you know, they pay for our busing, they pay for.
Okay, I see, now I see what you, I see what she means now that you explained it.
Yes, so I take this report from Pam, I take all of our numbers at the end of the year, and I started working on that actually this week. And then, I bill GES for their athletes.
Right.
Based on the cost and other things per, per participant.
Yep.
And then, I also, so if our kids' fees, based on how many kids participate, cover all the costs when I divvy it up for sport, they don't get a bill.
They don't get a bill, okay. That, thank you.
You can see, we had five students from GES participate this year. They were in volleyball, cross-country, and track. Forty-one scholarships were provided. And then, we have the cooperative agreements for cross-country, and that's with Two Harbors. And then, hockey is with Two Harbors, Silver Bay, and Cook County. Alpine skiing, Cook County hosts, and they have Silver Bay. And then, junior high sports, we host GES, and we have two track participants, two cross-country, and one volleyball. Booster Club provides money for athletics at Cook County. Oh, we didn't have them out there.
There's no dollar amount in there. I know, what's the dollar amount? Do you know?
What was that?
Booster Club. Do you happen to know what they donated this year for athletics?
So, I don't know what they donated because a lot of times they, they just donate things. But I do know that they do some of our middle school coaches. I gave him that number to say, this is how much I paid for all these coaches.
And they did some structural improvements in the concession stand as well.
So, on the numbers section here?
Yeah.
I didn't quite track what it meant exactly, where it's the participation fees equal twenty-eight thousand minus two-hundred-and-seventy-three equals a hundred and two, I don't.
It's divided.
Divided by two-hundred-and-seventy-three.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, you know, and obviously, we, a hundred and forty-six kids participate, but obviously, some were multiple sport athletes.
Okay, so that's the amount per, and then, and then the like number next to each sport, is that like?
That's how many participants were.
Total number of participants.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
And that's the entire program, so that's not just the part. And the nice thing about this one, we didn't, we say, I just remember last year's, we had the injuries in there. Dr. DeWitt, do you recall any major injuries? I don't.
Sports, actually.
Yeah, the year prior, I should say.
We had the injury to the ski. Why didn't they have them?
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments from anybody? Okay. Thank you for Pam Taylor for her last report. Nine point ten to, okay, so we have a one-year or three-year? So, does somebody want to pick one to make a motion?
Make the motion to approve the three-year contract.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
We're fighting over that.
Discussion. Both options are in here?
Correct.
And the nine, the first one, no, the second one is the three-year? Go ahead, Dr. Crandall.
So, the only piece, it's a two percent increase in wages for each year, that's each year. That's the only, from the current year. That's the same, the way. That's the same that I did for, with the other district. And then to share with the board, the Lake Superior School District Board, which is our next agenda item, is the shared agreement. They approved the three-year shared agreement. The piece I wanna highlight for our board, as I highlighted for Lake Superior School Board, is that the agreement hasn't changed. And the reason I state it that way is because in the agreement, Cook County Board or Lake Superior Board can cancel the agreement anytime. My contract's really linked to it, and so if we cancel the agreement, that's canceling my contract as well. And it states in there, I think it's a ninety-day piece.
Yep.
Either board can say, no, we're gonna, we're going in a different direction, we don't want to continue this, and then ninety days. So what this does is just, we're guaranteed, we, we know what we're doing for the next three years. Or anytime during the next three years, we can go in a different direction.
So how many year, is this completing two? And the two preceding years were ninety days per year, same?
No, the first year was seventy-eight.
I think it was seventy-eight, actually.
Seventy, you are correct.
Yes, it wasn't enough. So we did, we asked for the ninety, and we asked sometimes, can it be more? And he says no, and so.
But I put in, I mean.
But he's, he's got his full-time job done.
Yeah.
There, so I mean, because.
And Lake Superior School District Board understands that, the Cook County Board understands that, so if something serious happened, let's say something happened to Dr. DeWitt, just God forbid, but, and I'll, so you need somebody here, you know, and Mitch isn't around or whatever, we just, we just need support here, they know that I'd be up here.
Sure.
And saying something happened, they know that I would, you would know that I would be there.
Sure. Okay, yeah, cause I, I mean, it seemed like, well, okay, that's fine, I, it just seemed like, uh, its absence in the joint powers agreement just was sort of stuck out to me because it was like, you know, it just didn't clarify, you know, we had it in your contract, but it wasn't like an agreement that we have with them, you know, to like prevent any sort of like conflict between like the two school boards, you know, that you would get caught in the middle of. But I guess if it's in your contract, I didn't read it carefully enough to say, if it said like shall not exceed ninety days or something, but.
It's, it's ninety days.
Just ninety, yeah.
So if I work more than ninety, that's something.
I'm sure you never do.
And they're only eight-hour days?
Yeah.
Does that include drive time?
No.
Okay.
You gotta remember, for example, like tomorrow, like seven-thirty, do my, um, radio show, and the eight fifteen meeting with, uh, facilities with Y via telepresence.
Yeah.
Lori and I spend time via, well, we did that, well, that was yesterday. Telepresence is just yesterday, Dr. DeWitt and I do that, there are phone calls, and so we're in contact all the time.
He's always.
You know, and obviously, I'm connecting with many of the board members.
Yep.
Sure.
With Pam, she's a day.
Professional, professional management position.
Yeah, he's a machine.
Yeah.
So the other question I had was about like, just in terms of this, not necessarily a concern, but just sort of like from a best practices standpoint of like doing some sort of like formal like evaluation process. I noticed that wasn't, I don't know if we've done that, or that's not in the contract.
Anytime the board can say we'd like to do, or I, I have the right to ask the board for an evaluation, so I'm thinking we'll do that in August.
Yeah.
I'll get something, I'll work with Pam, and we'll get the forms out at the July meeting. So you'll have a, a written copy if you'd like, or we can have it on the computer, and then everything then goes to the board chair.
Yeah.
And then we go to the closed session and.
Yeah, so we will do that, and we've used various formats before, and, um, you know, some of them pretty detailed, some of, some lengthy, and some could be more of a free-form, list, three strengths, three weaknesses, three things to work on. But definitely, I talked to Dr. Krendel and said we should do that, because if we do it in August, then that kind of sets us up for the school year. And so we do, like Dr. Krendel said, you'll get something emailed to you, paper form, and then you bring it to that closed session, and then we have that discussion, and, um.
Actually, you're probably prior to it, so Cecilia.
Yeah, send it, usually, yeah, I think I usually have you send it to me, and then, cause I do have to write up a summary, you know, we do, that's, we recess on a closed session, that it's recorded, but then we go over that, and then, um, at the end of it, then I have to do a summary, and then the summary is public, then I read at the following board meeting, and then it's public. And so, um, that's the way that we review, um, the superintendent, so.
What are your guests' thoughts on, I'm kind of a fan of, uh, three sixty evaluations? I don't know if that's something you've ever done, or how you feel about that, but basically getting feedback from like, you know, people above you, like, I guess you don't have anyone parallel, but then under as well, you know.
Do you have a form?
I, yeah, I can find something, we did this at my old company, we would do that annually, so you would get, your supervisor would solicit feedback from like five people that you worked with, and that was like maybe subordinate to you, or people that you were same level with, and other people above you. And it just was like a nice way of getting like, can you give me an example of, it wasn't like a real long thing, but it was like, give me a specific example of where this person like could have done better, or, and a specific example of like where, you know, they did a great job, you know, something simple like that, so you could get like from the principal, from Mr. Nelson, from Lori, you know, from the board, you know what I mean, and then it's just kind of a nice perspective, because it's, you know, you know, our perspective is one.
Yeah, but if you, if you can send that to us.
Sure.
That'd be great.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, and then, and then. And then we can send it, and we'll give it to everybody at that meeting, and, um, so then we'll have the actual evaluation at our August meeting. Any other questions specific to the three-year? I did notice just a typo in here.
Oh.
Um, in the, it says, um, the duration is for one year, commencing twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay, so we'll just make sure that that's.
Cause it says twenty twenty-one, but.
I will. I, I will, I'd have to change a few things, like most of this stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, it was actually real quick, all of a sudden, she said, hey, should I make up that? And I said, yes.
Yes.
So she quickly puts something out to get it into the package, so.
Um, and it lays out, as of her, as we can see, it lays out what those increases, um, would, would be for the various years. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Our negotiators spoke to the superintendent, or.
We emailed back and forth.
Okay, so.
The reason that the three years, like, we had a, we had rather tumultuous time with administration over the last few years, and so that's why we were doing one years, I mean, the, you know, this, and so now, I think we've got it. And so now we don't want to lose anyone, and so we're gonna tie them in place, and so we can continue to actually thrive. We've got some continuity that, and consistency, and we have a great team, I believe, personal perspective. But, uh, I feel really good about who's our leadership in this county, or school district. And I don't want to give anyone a reason to like say, oh, well, I got a better offer.
That feels very natural.
And so we're gonna tie them in, tie them in for three years, and so for the next three years, you guys have to go for it.
Well, and that was something that was kind of going back and forth, cause I'm still new to the negotiation process, and we go through all these different, I've been on quite a few of them now, but this is, you know, so why is the principal two, and the superintendent three, and apparently that's standard, and I, I, these are things I didn't.
Well, and we hadn't done that, I don't think we, uh.
We haven't, we haven't done more than a year for, yeah.
A while.
Well.
Oh, for me.
For, for you, you've been here for the last couple of years, and then even before that.
Turn it off. I think it's, anyway.
Yeah, but it does provide, it does provide a message of, you know, like you said, consistency, you know, we've got a stable administration, we would assume that it would stay that way, and so this does, um, for some people, it's very comforting, um, to show that the board is saying, okay, this is what, this is the direction we feel that we wanna be in, and, um, so that's part of the reason why, um, cause you can do a one, two, or three in the superintendent world, I mean, that is, three is probably, two or three is the most common, correct?
Yes.
But ultimately, with any of these contracts, if there's a significance concern.
There's wording in there.
The other shared, the other ninety days, for that, for me, you just call me.
Not saying that I'm concerned about you, but, I mean, we do, we're not committing to something that's.
Settling stone, no matter what happens.
Cause you have our.
But it's about, our whole, our whole system here is based on relationships, and the dynamics, and the, and, um, that's how kids learn, relationships, time, and so they get to see the same, makes a difference when they even see the same, you know, principles or.
Yeah.
You know, or, you know, that makes a difference, and it adds to their comfort and what they can count on, so.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Okay, all those in favor to approve the three-year superintendent contract, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next piece that we have to do is nine point eleven to approve the joint powers agreement to share superintendent services with Lake Superior District I S D three eighty-one.
Make motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay, any, um, discussion?
That's the same.
It's the same, it's the same agreement.
Same agreement, and they've already approved.
And they, and you see that in, that they've already approved and signed off on it, on there, so, um, yep. Any other questions? All right, all of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, nine point twelve, to designate the identified official with authority for the M D E external user access recertification system as Superintendent Krendel.
So, so what this is, is for example, you know, Lori needs access to reports, Dr. DeWitt does, Jill Bowen works in Marsh, she needs them, Pam needs access, um, the folks at ARC need access, folks that are co-op, so the only way they get access is for me to provide it. I have to go into the system and authorize that they have access. At the same time, for example, Chris Hoffman, he had access to certain reports, I go in and I take him off, and I'll add our new counselor. And so that's a yearly piece, that every year, school boards do this, they provide that authorization for, and it's the superintendent in every district that I'm aware of, that's it.
The motion.
To designate.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nine point one three. Okay, so, uh, I need a motion to approve the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy for the twenty eighteen school board general election.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion? Uh, you can see that this lays out what the filing period is, and then who, it's from July thirty-first to August fourth.
Fourteenth.
August fourteenth.
I'm sorry, August fourteenth?
Is it?
Yeah.
Did I, August fourteenth? Also, um, it describes what districts are up, uh, District One, Coalville, Grand Portage, Holland area. District Three, Cascade, Gramary West, and District Five, Luton, Pike Lake, Schroeder, Tofti. So.
Four-year terms.
Four-year terms.
Are those the same as like the county commissioner districts?
Yes.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, they are exactly the same.
So all three of you guys are up in, could be all different people. Completely different people.
It could be three different people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Fascinating to me.
For the term beginning on.
January first, twenty nineteen.
So your last meeting technically will be the December.
Yeah, your December meeting, so your term ends, you know, December thirty-first of twenty eighteen. Um, and so I just wanna make a plug to the members that, the filing dates, and no pressure, uh, but.
But you can consider, right?
But, uh.
If you need the two dollars.
If you need the two dollars, um, just wanna make sure, and, um, also, of course, wanna make sure the public knows, um, it's a very rewarding experience to be on the school board, and, um, I just wanna encourage anybody who's interested, obviously, I'd like to retain our members, but I also wanna encourage anybody to please, um, if they have any questions, to ask any of us, and I just really encourage, I really, it makes me sad when we don't have anybody file, um, because it's just, you know, I, it's, it's disappointing not to have somebody wanna serve on the board, so, um, I'm just hopeful that we've got at least one candidate.
More than one candidate, it feels sort of strange that like.
Chris had to be right in, cause nobody, nobody.
There was no one else against him?
We had, you know how much we had to bribe him?
Yeah.
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
Yep, and then the, uh, information as far as filing is at the Cook County court.
Yeah, it's at the courthouse, it's not at the school, it's at the courthouse.
It's very easy.
It's very easy.
It is.
Will this go in the paper?
Yes.
W T A P.
Okay.
And it is a very rewarding, or the sit-down, it's very fascinating.
I have a list of two pages of dates that have to happen for the election.
So does it appear more than once, Pam, or does it just appear once?
Um, yeah, it needs to be two weeks, and then, no, just appears once, just one time. We have to have it in the paper, and we have to have it posted, like outside the district office and outside the, the B K control office, that's where it goes.
Okay, all right, just making sure we get it out there as much as possible that this is happening, cause we're not, we're not the same as, you know, the other county offices, that already happened, and so, okay.
Um, so I sent you guys this email about me being the charterer of coffee. And it says on here, blah, 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 it must have no other affidavit on file for any other office at the same primary or general election. Now, I don't think, of course, this is the way my life goes, I was also appointed to that, I didn't actually run, cause I was filling a vacancy, but that goes, so that term ends in March, and so they don't, I guess, don't tie the township elections to the general election, so that wouldn't, so if I wanted, I guess where I'm going with this is, if I wanted to do that again too, it wouldn't conflict with what this is saying, cause it's not the same.
Yeah, I don't think so, and, um, Dan did do his research, um, on that, and provided us with documentation of that, so thank you for doing that. Yeah, I think you're fine, I think, from what I read.
As I'm weighing all of my, uh, my.
Of your public service?
My campaigns that'll may or may not be launching.
Uh, I appreciate your willingness to serve.
Very much so.
Yeah. Um, okay, any other questions, or, um, and then this is just a vote for this, so any other questions or discussion?
I can't believe I put in almost eight years already.
It's amazing, Deb.
It's another four-year term, you could put in twelve.
Yeah, sounds like fun.
I had no idea it was eighteen.
You know, and all in that, you might as well go for longer, cause it'd be like raising a child.
We've already done that a couple of times.
Eighteen-year commitment, it's your third child.
Well, I just look at what we've accomplished, I mean, and now we're going to continue on this. You guys have a lot to do to keep it rolling, I mean, to meet what we're, we've come from, so.
Okay, well, you have until July, or.
July thirty-first.
July thirty-first, August fourteenth, okay.
And that's the timeframe where you go and pay the two dollars.
You need to file, yes.
Dr. Krendel will pay the two dollars, he offered six dollars, so it's two percent rate to you guys.
All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye? Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, so now we're to the personnel items, um, ten point one, to approve resignation of ECSE teacher Autumn Hood.
Who we didn't get to enjoy as ECSE teacher.
No.
Make a motion to approve the resignation.
I'll second it.
Okay, White, Janzen, all right, any discussion? Are you taking?
Random question, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask these sort of questions. I'm gonna ask it.
Okay, be ready to say.
You can say, I won't answer that.
Okay.
Did we have quite a few candidates in the ECSE pool in the, originally?
I don't know, I don't know either.
I was just gonna.
We don't remember. So we're gonna repost for the position?
We're reposting.
Reposting.
So reposting.
I'm just hoping that there's still gonna be interest in the position, you know, cause later against the.
So we're repost immediately, okay, perfect, and, okay, so we can't have a lot of discussion probably on these, so, any question, otherwise, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten point two, to approve hire of middle school social studies teacher Brian Miller at one point O FTE, B A A.
Go vote.
Second. Who said, who said? I seconded.
Second, and White, um, and then you see we have this information, thank you again for providing us this information, we really appreciate it, so you can see and hear who the person is, what the FTE is, and then it does list experience, and placement on the salary schedule.
So this person has a bachelor's, do they have a license to teach social studies?
Yes.
This is something that's not on here that I, you know, it makes me feel good to know that they've, and they've not taught anywhere else though, so they're a new social space teacher, they'll bring fresh and exciting ideas, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten point three, to approve hire of kindergarten teacher Autumn Hood at one point O FTE MA slash B.
Make a motion to approve higher quality.
I'll second it.
I believe you only who are the ones who are preschool teachers, should be outstanding in kindergarten.
Yes.
So it's with the year of experience that.
I anticipate her and Lacy working together will be a really great experience for both of them.
Good team.
Yes.
Around the same achievement, but two years on.
Yeah.
Great. They're really practicing in there, so we have to talk loudly, um, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, ten point four, to approve the hire of fifth grade elementary teacher Jessica Pickett at one point O FTE MA.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
White will second it.
Okay.
Let me share a little bit, please.
Any, yes?
I think, I think she's a great, great hire, and she actually taught this past year, and, I'm not sure I slipped it on right now.
Is it Thailand?
Thailand, or is it, did it say Thailand?
It says Thailand.
Overseas, yeah, so it's, we were hearing her, and she was.
She was in Thailand, yeah, yeah, kinda called her.
Wow.
That's kinda neat.
She'd be great, in time to work with her.
Great. Okay.
Um, she has a master of education, I'm assuming she's a licensed elementary.
Maybe that should be added on as a line.
I think that'd be great, but, give me, you know, many, I want a mile.
We do need an opportunity to speak somewhere.
Normally, I don't struggle to find opportunities to speak.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten point five, to approve preschool teacher Lynn Shields at B A A hourly rate on VPK?
Voluntary. Voluntary pre-K.
Voluntary pre-K contract, okay.
So, in preschool with the funding, we're required to pay our preschool teachers at a similar rate to our middle school teachers, that's right.
And she has a, she's a licensed teacher.
Okay.
And she was, you say years of experience, not available, but she was the kindergarten teacher when Julie Grant was like retired mid-year or something, so she.
Yeah, she, she has been.
She was ECSE here for a number of years.
Make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Chris.
I will second it.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Ten point six, to approve work agreement for food service specialist Linda Bakovich. Um, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Uh, so this is for highlights for the board, it's a, it's a two-year, two percent for each year, the first year being this year right now, yeah, so the second year being next year. Uh, some of the other changes, we added single insurance as an option, she only had family, so now she has the option to take single, which would actually save us. There are two items that were removed, one was, there was an incentive in her contract, and actually, two years ago, we removed that incentive and rolled that into her base pay, so, actually, she didn't receive, so this sixteen, seventeen contract year, that was her increase, was just put in the base, so she didn't get any percentage on top of that. And so, this year she got two percent, and then next year she'll have two percent. Uh, the other piece was that first year that I was here with her, she had a, an improvement plan, and she met that, and so that component in her contract is also. Uh, what, just to share with you that incentive piece, what her incentive was, is to keep the food service in the black.
Yeah.
Um, she did such a good job as shared, that we would now be able to spend money, so she does a very good job as far as being prudent.
Stay responsible.
Very much so.
Yep.
And she's also, on the positive side, I know Dr. DeWitt, I believe, is on that committee too, but working with the parent group, looking at menu options, and so she's been very willing to, you know, participate in those programs and such as well.
So what is, what is the job for the rubber meets the road, what is the food service specialist?
Oh, she is a head cook.
Head cook.
Okay. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Which is more than cooking though, there's a lot of.
Yeah, she does, she, she's the cook, she does all the ordering, menu preparations.
And it turns, she has an assistant.
She has an assistant, and then she has one other employee that she.
But ultimately, Dr. Krendle is the head of food service.
Correct.
Yeah, he's the super member.
And then.
Lori gets.
Lori takes care of it, she has a little piece, Jill Bowen has a piece, you, Pam has a piece, so.
Pam, there's a lot of people that help that do our program, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Uh, all of our new hires, they will be getting mentors, being a mentor assigned to them, and they'll get two.
Correct. That's part of the cucumber.
Oh, yeah.
And there is, as mentioned, the changes that there's going to be, for example, I may have to say, I'm a teacher, and I did the job, I am the mentor coordinator, and if you're all the mentors, I am checking up, so have you met with, how often, when did you meet with them, any issues, you know, go around, blah, 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 and also, I would check in with the mentees, you know, hey, you have a mentor, how's that, is things working out, do you know, I'd have a little checklist, do you know this stuff?
Would you say that we finally have a really good mentor program?
I would say that.
Or we're still closing in on it?
I think we have good people and good things, but that's, that was part of the reason, that was one of the things I wanted to adjust, is that I think that we still have areas in progress.
Okay.
I really do, I, and a part of that too is because of school changes every year, I mean, there's uniforms and processes and procedures, I think you're doing.
And the people, yeah. Okay, so any other specific to approving the food specialist contract? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, anything else?
Oh, I forgot, I paused just one little quick thing, actually, it's, it's on the pause, um, state legislation, not much happened, one thing did, actually, two things happened. Uh, one's a wash, and it's, we're getting money, but at the same time, that money is gonna take care of the fact that this isn't TRA, so the retirement, kind of the pension scenario for teachers. That has increased, I can't remember how much, some point, some odd fraction of a number. At the same time, we have gotten funding which will cover that, so it's really, it's a wash.
So I didn't put either one of those.
No, cause it just washes, it's, you know, kind of thing. The other, and we've already started the, the wheels in motion, they didn't have a specific date, but in mid-July, they are gonna open up a grant opportunity for security and safety in schools, and so we are working, that's, I think it was twenty-five million statewide, so we're already working, Dr. DeWitt, myself, we've had some companies already come in, we've worked with ARI at looking at, what do we need? And we're gonna put everything in, you know, bullet, there's a film that three M does, that you can put on your glass, a bulletproof glass, that makes a bulletproof, bulletproof, basically, it won't shatter, so you can't go da, 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 shoot it up and walk through, it, it binds it together. Uh, we had a walkthrough today to make sure our PA system works everywhere. Uh, a point, right now, if you're out in the playground, you would, you would have no idea if something happened in our building, so we're gonna have a strobe light out there, so they know, you know, the strobe light means the fire drill locked down, or whatever it happens to be, and then obviously, in our emergency preparedness, we'll have pieces there. Uh, make sure all of our cameras are working, operating, and where we want them, where we need them, not only here, probably over there at our bus garage as well. One of the big areas we're looking at is securing our situation between the Y and our cell, and putting in our, our doors there, our secure doors, and so it would change our flow pattern, we're also looking at continuing to keep access to a bathroom, so I'm not sure if we'd be able to get that in this grant or not, but that may be something in the future that capital outlay that we would be doing. Yeah, so we're looking at everything that we can put in there for, for safety and security, and hoping to do as much as we can for it, so.
Yeah. Okay, we're done with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Perfect. I need a second.
I will second it.
Okay, and we adjourned at seven forty-three PM.
Remember to log.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, I forget that we always vote, okay, we're adjourned. Pam, do you have all the stuff for us to sign? All right, no, I just, that's what I asked. Pam, no more, you got to switch off.
Hopefully, he is waiting.
He will be waiting. Sissy?
Yeah. These two have your name on them.
I already ate one, do I get another one?
Yeah.
Mike and Pam just like shut off, did you guys?
She's getting my second.